Okay, it is six o'clock on Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty four. I am calling to order the Rutland Select Board meeting. We are meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. We're on a Tuesday night because yesterday was Monday holiday for Veterans Day. Um, I will call, we are being recorded, um, livestreamed for local access television, recorded for local access television as well as other social media outlets, YouTube and everything. We also are on Zoom, um, for public participation or anyone who wants to watch, listen, participate. Um, if we could please stand for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I give Tom a second.
Go ahead.
Okay, sure. Um, we, I will move into minutes Treasury Warrant and Payroll. We have the approval of Treasury Warrant twenty-five dash ten and twenty-five dash PW ten. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Treasury Warrant twenty-five dash ten and twenty-five dash PW ten.
Second.
Is there any conversation, questions, concerns? We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Waitman I, thank you. Um, we have some sets of, uh, meeting minutes, so we will take them, um, individually. We have the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting. That was the, um, joint meeting with FinCom when we set the warrant, um, for the special town meeting. Um, thank you, Tamika, for, for providing these.
Thanks, ma'am.
I don't believe FinCom has had an opportunity to review them yet, they haven't met. Um, but I would entertain a motion, um, to approve the October twenty-fourth minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any conversation or clarification, anything? We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Waitman I, thank you. Um, we have the, our, uh, regular schedule, our last regular scheduled meeting from October twenty-eighth. Uh, this was a Monday night. Um, we all were in attendance. Um, so there is, I would entertain a motion to approve the October twenty-eighth minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Conversation. We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Waitman I, thank you, Tamika, for those. Um, we have our, um, off-night meeting that was by Zoom only from, uh, November fourth. Um, that was a Monday night, it was Zoom only when we discussed the potential need for a Board of Registered, uh, Substitute Appointment. Um, I believe, Tommy, you were absent from this one.
Yep.
Um, so I would entertain a motion to approve the November fourth minutes. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Conversation. We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Waitman I, thank you. Um, we have some, um, we'd asked to review the executive session meeting minutes, um, for a possible release. These were all the meeting minutes from the past, um, calendar year, starting in January, uh, twenty twenty-four. Um, I'm not sure if, um, anyone has, um, any concerns, recommendations. We, we have, we provided the list, Tamika, thank you, um, of kind of the status of all of them. Um, and I believe, for the most part, um, what we could release has been released. Um, everything else is either personnel-related or still ongoing, if my memory serves me right.
Are we not able to release any of the minutes associated with the contract, the union negotiations?
Um, we could.
Are these all where it, it says CBA settled, is that all, are those all released?
Um, I, I don't believe, we, I think we would just have to separate them out because I think that,
Yes.
So, I think that we can definitely, um, a lot of those are, uh, on meeting, uh, executive sessions that had multiple topics.
Multiple, yeah.
Um, and some of those topics are still either ongoing or personnel-related.
Yes. Yeah.
Um, like sensitive personnel-related. So, um, if we are interested in separating out the, um, the CBA stuff, we can do that and then maybe just put all the CBA stuff for our next meeting, um, to, to kind of do a review and to release. But, um, is there anything else that people feel should be released that hasn't been released?
Well, the firefighters' union, why are we still, it's settled. Is that one that's still ongoing for some reason that we don't, okay, so that one can be?
That's the CBA that we were, one of the CBAs that we were talking about, collective bargaining agreement, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying, though, those three, if there's nothing going on, the firefighter, I can't remember the firefighters, I don't think there was anything else on that one. Do you remember, Tamika?
Um, I don't, but I can separate out the CBAs into their own separate meeting minutes so that you can release just those if there was anything else on that night that maybe you didn't want to release.
I mean, I've read them all, I just can't remember how much was attached to them.
Yeah, I can't remember because there was a lot of minutes there.
Okay.
My recommendation, because these minutes have already been approved, I would recommend a separate motion to amend those minutes. Um, so Tamika can, can do that. And then you can go back and re-approve those and release those if you choose.
Okay.
So, I guess, if, it sounds like if the board is amenable, um, Tamika, if you don't mind separating out the meeting minutes, um, from especially the CBA, uh, ones from the, the other issues that we can review for our next meeting to re-approve those and then release this, at least the CBA ones.
Okay, so I'm just separating out the CBA ones, we're not doing anything with the others at this time, is that correct?
Um, I'm, I mean, looking at these, correct, looking at these, that some of them are, like, s- a lot of them are with issues that are still either ongoing or very sensitive personnel matter-related that I don't think, personally don't think should be released.
Yep. Yep.
Um, and then, yeah, the other one that I think that we could probably release is the September fourth one potentially. Um, at least if we can separate out that for the, um, the town accountant.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think that we're, we would be looking yet because there's still no further updates on the, the other piece that we would want to hold those for right now, but the, the town accountant could be, um, se- uh, released. Austin, is that your take?
Yeah, but, but again, I would ask for a motion tonight just to, to give directives to, to, he could amend those.
Yep.
Um, and any other motions you'd like, or minutes you'd like amended now.
Do you want individual or just a blanket to separate? Is one motion okay or one for?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if you just please list the dates.
Okay. Um, all right, so I'll make a motion to amend meeting minutes from January eighth to take out admin CBA. Um, amend February fifth to take out patrolmen's CBA. And amend September fourth to take out the accountant-related minutes.
I also wonder if we want to separate out the March eighteenth because that's the ch- patrolmen's union and then the treasure collector discussion. And I know the treasure collector discussion has been settled also. Um, I don't know if those were two separate.
Well, can you just remind me what the two five were, the February fifth, because Jen said patrolmen's on that one.
True.
Is it, is it two different ones for patrolmen? Okay.
Yeah.
Patrolmen's, yeah, patrolmen's CBA.
And you said you also want the treasure collector one too?
Uh, which is March eighteenth. Yeah, that's patrolmen's union and then the treasure collector.
Yeah, if you don't mind separating those because I think we can, I wanna, I wanna review the treasure collector, but I think we can probably release those also.
Okay.
Because I think that was a discussion, kind of a direction of the position.
Okay. And then which one was the firefighters' union? That one was September, okay, so that one's town accountant and firefighters.
Uh, September fourth firefighters, looks like it's on its own, unless it's part of, it's on a separate line. But yeah, it's just, I can't remember if it was together or not.
I think because we did that at the beginning, we did the firefighters at the beginning of the meeting and then the other two were at the end of the meeting.
That's what, yeah, and, and there were some that I had already separated out, knowing, like with the woodhouse ones, knowing that you guys were gonna eventually release them, like those I had separated out from other matters discussed. So, I apologize if that was confusing, but I, I have an understanding of what you guys are looking for and I'll do that for next time.
Okay, yeah.
So, we have a motion, is there a second?
All right. Yep.
Second.
Any conversation? We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Waitman I, Tamika, if I can pull these together. And maybe I can make a suggestion just kind of going forward to the future.
Yep.
That any executive session that they're all done separately, even if they're held within the same executive session, each topic is individually held. That way, if we have ongoing issues, we can, at one fell swoop, just say we're ready to release these that we've already approved.
Yeah. Okay.
Rather than having to piece them out, you know?
Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, we have a six o'clock public, oh, sorry. Yes, we did, um, our meeting minutes and, uh, executive session, thank you. And I believe we should be fairly caught up, um, with the past couple, uh, years boards with executive session minutes. And we, I think the previous, last year, we reviewed as much as we could, um, and felt comfortable releasing. So I think we should be as current as, or will be after our next meeting. We have a six o'clock public hearing, I will open the public hearing. It's an application for retail liquor license, Rutland Tap and Table at two forty-nine Main Street. This is for all alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption. Um, I'm opening the hearing at six twelve. Um, is there anyone here from Rutland Tap and Table? Name an address, please.
Um, Cynthia Larson, seven East Main Street, Westbrookfield.
And Roger Lawson, seven East Main Street, Westbrookfield.
Thank you, thank you for coming and thank you for, um, the application and everything. Um, there's been a lot of chatter about it in town, so I think, um, everybody is excited that, that there's movement, um, on, on the space, so.
We are too.
Um, is there anyone here that would have any, um, in, um, would like to speak to the application for the liquor license? This would be in the former, um, Center Tree Bar and Grill space, um, in the blue building across the street, just for public.
Question.
Sure.
You have two other facilities.
Uh, we have the Hitchcock Tavern, formerly the Yale Tavern in Westbrookfield on Route nine, and Common Ground Cider Works in North Brookfield.
Which came first?
The tavern, we've been there since two thousand and seven.
Ah, okay, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Um, and this is for, this follows kind of through the process, just for the public. Um, we have local lic- local liquor licensing authority as a select board. We issue that and then it goes to the state for final approval, correct?
Yes.
Right.
And then. And then back to you for issuing of the license.
Right, for the signing and issuance of the license, yep.
Yes.
So, um, this, I, this is the license that the current, that, that the former entities over there had had also. Um, I know MGL had recently had a couple updates as far as the on-premise, um, piece that we followed. You know, we updated our, um, information as well for that as well, so.
Through the chair, can you give us an idea of what type of place it's gonna be?
Um, similar to what was there previously and the tavern, um, comfort food, pub food. Um, we will have some pizza. Um, we were back and forth about what kind of pizza exactly, but something to do with pizza. And, um, again, it's, it's, we've always been open for lunch and dinner seven days a week. And I know that here they were only open for dinner. And, um, we would like to do lunch. Um, been a lot of discussion about whether or not Rutland wants lunch or needs lunch. So, um, we think when we open, it will be lunch, maybe on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and then dinner seven days a week. Uh, maybe a little music bingo trivia, um, what's called for here. But, um, we do everything from burgers and we do a burger night. Today's Tuesday, it's Taco Tuesday. Tomorrow's Win- Wednesday, Thursday is prime rib, um, Friday is nine ninety-nine fish and chips. It's just, um, we're a small community in Westbrookfield, so we see the same people a couple times a week and every single week. And hopefully it'll be the same here.
Awesome.
I tell you, if you can add a few more TVs, you're gonna have a lot of people in there. Because I, I, we usually go to Holden and watch games because there's not any TVs in there, you know, so.
Oh, wow. There, that bar is definitely set up for more TVs.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes. Um, we're going to add a, another eight taps for beer. Um, with Common Ground, we make our own beer, wine, cider and seltzer. So we are more craft beer, so there'll be a larger draft beer selection.
That's great.
We're, we'll grow into what's needed, what doesn't work, we won't keep.
This town definitely needs
Yes.
a place to escape to, so that's.
And it's on my way home.
Um, what are your, what are you thinking your hours would be? I know you said about lunch, but kind of close, um, so have you thought about it?
We close at nine now. We're, we're getting older, we used to be open till one every day. And, um, post-COVID, people, uh, it's gonna depend. Um, I think to start off, it'll be we'll close the kitchen at nine o'clock and we'll stay open while we're cleaning. And then if it seems to be something where we need to be open a little later, we will. I know that there are tenants upstairs, I don't want to be open too late. We're not as young as we used to be, we don't want to be open that late either. But what, it depends on what the business in this area.
Yeah, what people, you know, people still want to order food at nine o'clock. We're gonna push that envelope to, you know, nine thirty, ten, if that means it'll bring in the business. But if it dies off at seven thirty, eight o'clock, you don't want to really, you know. Again, it depends on, there's a new neighborhood to see how it goes for that part.
That's good.
Plus, we are ones that, you know, like to get something to eat, not always at seven o'clock, you know, it's nine o'clock a lot of times for ourselves. Depends on our lifestyle and it's like, it's hard to find places to go to get something to eat.
Yeah. I think kind of after meetings and everything also, like wanting to grab something to eat or drink or something and then
Yeah. Right, yeah. Yeah.
not have to go to Holden or, or, um, I think Lads is closed Mondays and Tuesdays.
Right.
Tuesdays, thank you.
Um, and so that's sometimes tough also.
Lads are so far away too.
I know. Yes, it's around the corner for me. So, does anyone else, either public, either on Zoom or in person, have any questions or comments for, um, Cindy and Bill? Roger, sorry, I had to fill in my head, sorry.
Harry did.
Okay, go ahead, Harry.
Through the chair, do you have any idea of a soft opening?
Um, it's a liquor license dependent.
Okay.
Um, I hear it can take up to four months. I, I don't anticipate, um, the license being issued in December because of renewals. I mean, they have to do thirteen thousand renewals in the month of December. I don't imagine a new license is gonna be a high priority. But I would really hope right after the first of the year and maybe we could be open by the first of February. But the first of the month, as soon as we get the license, we will stock the bar and, and move on. And we already started looking into staffing and, um, different things over there, so.
Anticipation.
Yes, yes, it's been fun.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping Rutland on that, on the radar too, I appreciate that. Um, hearing nothing else, and I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Oh, wait, wait, an I, six eighteen, we're closed. Um, does the board have any other conversation amongst themselves? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the liquor license application for Rutland Tap and Table at two forty-nine Main Street as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Conversation. Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Waitman I, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we look forward to getting to know all of you across the street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tamika will, I'm sure you've been in touch a lot with Tamika and Austin and they can kind of help keep you, you know,
Yeah.
you in the loop and us in the loop.
Yes, she's, she's been very good, she sent me a reminder email a couple days ago. It's been great, but thank you.
Good luck, thank you, we're excited, thank you.
Yep.
And if you want to do fundraisers with local nonprofit, it's a good thing to do.
We do.
Yeah.
We do, we're doing, um, next week, we're doing North Brookfield.
Um, so is there, anyone here for public comments?
Congratulations.
Welcome to town, glad you're coming.
Thank you very much.
Mike Sol.
Nice to meet you.
Sorry, guys.
No, no, is there anyone here for public comments? Zoom, in person?
I'm a public comment.
Yes, name and address, please.
Yeah, I am. Um, my name is Tamara Beeland and I unfortunately don't live in, at Rutland. Um, I work in Rutland, it's six fifty-seven, um, Worcester Street in Southbridge. Um, I am here because you said keeping Rutland on the radar. And I'm sure if you've been here for a long time, you know Overlook Farm and the Williams family. But I just wanted to let you know what's going on over there. We're tucked behind the trees by Lilac Hedge and this is actually going to be our fifth year. And we have been growing produce and our motto is grow, teach, give. So we grow produce on only about three thousand square feet. Previously owned part of it by the Williams family and then Lilac Hedge. And then we also teach kids. Actually, this year, we have seen over six hundred children, including Tamika's beautiful Quinn and Finley. Um, we have done, we had five weeks of sold-out summer camps. We did after-school programs with Naqwa and Glenwood. We have that planned for next year too. And also, um, seedlings classes for preschool kids, homeschool classes for some parents. It's been an incredible year for our education part. But one of our biggest things is that we also give. We did thirty-two hundred pounds of produce this year that we donated to seven food pantries, including places like the Rutland COA and Wachusett Food Pantry, all the way from Webster, Wachusett, all the way, um, up to Worcester and other places. And it's really been an exciting year. Um, we're just most excited because we are tucked away and people don't always know we're there. But we just wanted to remind you that we're there, that we're trying to do good work, that we're preserving that land in Rutland. I, when I came in and I saw the cow on the, um, front panes out there, I thought, you know, Rutland at heart really still is a farm town and it is to so many people. And for us to be able to teach kids about where food comes from, where it goes, and keeping that in the community, it's just been such an important thing for us. We are actually going to start coming up soon, we got a sixty thousand dollar, um, pledge donation. So we're gonna do a match, um, challenge for that. So you may be seeing things about that coming up. We're also only run by three people. Myself is the executive director and then I have two gardeners. The rest is done by volunteers. This year, we had two hundred and ninety-five volunteers come from all over Worcester County, from Coughlin and VHB and, um, excuse me, different, a bunch of different banks and different individuals, Bentley College, um, lots of people coming in to support us and come through Rutland. And hopefully there'll be another restaurant that they can go and now they can go to that diner. Um, they often, all of our volunteers go and get ice cream at Lilac Hedge for sure. But we just wanted to speak to you and let you know that we were there. And if you ever have any questions or comments or people are interested in what we're doing, because we are such a small organization, we really depend on the community. We, you know, do get grants and things, but we depend on the community for donations and I'm gonna get them to do a fundraiser. Um, what a perfect opening for February. But I just wanted to, um, thank Tamika again too, she's been a great supporter. Her kids, um, Finn was at the field trip and I, he's had classes in school. And, um, Karen Cappucci has been amazing, everybody at the, both of the schools has really, have really supported us and we have a really, um, a good relationship between us, so, and the, and the bus systems too. But anyway, just wanted you to remember, we are there, we are tucked away, we are Overlook Farm and we grow, teach and give. Thank you so much.
Do you have, um, like, public hours? Uh, I, I know where you are, but, um, do you have public hours that people can kind of come, get, get some merch or?
Yeah, and volunteer, we do, I usually, like, yesterday was actually a, a volunteer day because we're shutting down the farm right now, it's the end of the season.
Yep.
Um, and eighteen people came. And I, that's always on our socials, so our socials are at, um, Overlook Farm Rutland. So that's also, our name is, Rutland is everywhere, you guys, because, um, there's other Overlook Farms. So we're Overlook Farm Rutland on Facebook, on, um, Instagram and on LinkedIn. And I post all of those places and I also put it up on our website, which is overlookfarmrutland.org. There's lots of opportunities for people to come. And when volunteers come too, they often get to pick the vegetables, take some home with them. Um, you know, the kids are always taking vegetables home with them too. Yesterday, we had a big, a bunch of carrots that went out with our group.
Awesome. Are you also looking for businesses that may be looking for a little bit more cohesive volunteer opportunities for their employees? Or even, I know oftentimes we see on social media or through the schools, we hear that students are looking for volunteer hours for something, whether it's National Honor Society or whether it's just for self-fulfilling purposes or, or whatever. Um, are you kind of?
I always am looking, I had, um, four kids this year, just a smaller group, but four kids this year that came and got hours and worked with me this summer. And then always looking for partnerships with organizations. Like I said, it's Coughlin, Central One, um, the New England Real Estate Association. And yesterday, five guys from Coughlin came and they worked hard, they didn't have to go to work that day. Um, they got off because their bosses support them going and, it wasn't a, um, a vacation day for them. They got off because their bosses support them doing volunteer work in the community. So anytime we can combine with that, that makes a big, big difference for us, not having to pay more gardeners. To be able to get to thirty-two hundred pounds, farming is a lot of work. And this season, I don't know if you remember, at the beginning, it was very rainy and the weeds were insane. And so really just keeping up with just the basic day-to-day and then harvesting and cleaning. And we also have done a wonderful thing, we're working with a place called Rachel's Table out of Worcester. And they come to us, to the barn and they pick up our vegetables and they deliver them through their volunteer program. So we've been able to cut out that piece of work for us, which has been a big deal.
Awesome.
So we're always looking to collaborate with anybody, business, kids, anything.
Awesome.
Yeah, send the kids our way. I mean, I have a testimonial on Facebook of one kid, he came in two days and he loved it and it changed his life, he said, because he never realized how much work goes into the food that you're getting out and then how much work to get that out to people who need it, whether it's the elderly or children or families that are homeless, so that made a big difference.
Awesome.
Thanks, y'all, I appreciate you.
Thank you and thank you for the work you're doing up there too, it's, it's great.
I love it, it's my favorite job in the world and Tamika Murphy is, you got a good one there. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comments? Hearing none, I will move into communication member comments announcements and town administrator update. I will try to keep my, um, comments, uh, on the shorter side. Um, the election is over, congratulations to all the winners. Um, and looking forward to moving forward and working with everyone. Um, I think it was a great turnout in Rutland, I don't know off the top of my head the percentage. Um, I think it was definitely pushing sixty percent maybe, I'm not one hundred percent sure. Um, so thank you for everyone who came out and voted and hung out with us on the commons and talked and chatted and everything. Um, we have some things coming up. I, oh, I also wanted to thank, um, our veterans agent, the American Legion, Boy Scouts, um, and the Fire Brigade for the, uh, veteran ceremony on Sunday afternoon, um, rededicating, there were sixteen names added to the war memorial plaque on the common. Um, and so it was a kind of a rededication of that and just acknowledgement of veterans, um, throughout the country, but especially in Rutland. Rutland has a lot of veterans. Um, we're also fortunate that a lot of veterans continue to serve. We have two here with us tonight on the board, um, that continue to serve, uh, the community. And so I think that that's a testimony to kind of Rutland's, Rutland's service. Um, Karen Greenwood, our veterans agent and the American Legion did a, a really nice job, um, to kind of gather those names and put on a program, so thank you all. Um, we have Hamagastet Road paving will begin this week. Hopefully it will only be thir- Wednesday and Thursday, beginning at nine AM. Um, it sounds like they're planning to do one way at a time, so it'll be alternating traffic. Um, I think it's been posted on social media, we'll kind of try to continue that also. Um, the information blast, um, just bear with us and hopefully by the end of this week, we will have a brand-new, um, Hamagastet Road and the, the traffic disruptions will be minimal if any after that. Um, also on Wednesday night, I believe the library is holding a game night for, uh, families with children age six plus. I believe it's pizza, snacks, chocolate milk, um, begins at six here at the library. Um, we have an ongoing food pantry donations kind of contest. The Economic Development Commission is working with the area businesses. Um, our food pantry is obviously. Um, our food pantry is obviously, we're getting into cold weather, the holiday seasons, um in dire need of uh donations. We have boxes set up around Town Hall and the annex. Um, I know the marketplace also has a, a donation table set up. Um, so if you can offer any sort of donations, please do, um that will benefit our community as a whole. Um, and I think the raffle is, if you donate five items or more, you're um entered into a raffle to win um something donated by local businesses, gift card or uh an experience or something. Um, and on Saturday, this Saturday, we have the Council on Aging Craft Fair at the um Community Center Senior Center building on Glenwood. Um, it's the Saturday sixteenth, I believe, from nine AM to two PM. Um, so that's always a well attended kind of opportunity to get, support our, some of our local crafters as well as do some holiday shopping, um gifts for yourself or your loved ones. Um, and I just wanted to let everyone know, we have a, a number of board and commission openings that are posted on the website, um including the opportunity to join the town cart, town charter committee, um which is a newly formed committee, um so there's an opportunity for that. Also, all the information is on social media as well as the website, but there are other openings as well. So please check that out if you're interested or have any sort of, or any um interest in getting involved. Um, do any other board members have any announcements or comments? Mister Administrator, it's your turn.
Thank you madam chair, good evening members of the board, uh just a few updates. Uh, I also just wanna echo the chair's comments. Um, wanna thank uh our veterans agent Karen Greenwood and, and members of the American Legion uh for I think uh another excellent Veterans Day ceremony. Um, also recognizing that there's thirteen additional names on the monument in front of Town Hall and the common. Um, I was happy to participate in the ceremony, most importantly, thank members of town staff and our boards and committees who have also served um and recognize their service and, and continued service at the local level as well. Uh, just a few updates, uh congratulating Public Works Director Kalowski for his successful application uh for the F Y twenty five salt reduction grant program, twenty thousand dollars to offset um the construction costs for a new salt shed located behind the D P W facility. Um, so this is not using any local funds, we're using Chapter Ninety Fair Share Amendment funds and the twenty thousand dollars from the salt uh reduc- reduction grant program. Uh, and the reason for this, this was actually a capital request last year. Um, one of the challenges that we have with our existing salt shed is uh we just have one, right? So we have to store both sand and salt. Um, so we're not maximizing the use of facility. So we'll have a dedicated sand storage and a dedicated salt short, storage, which means that we can hopefully use less salt um and less sand, um but also just have more um on hand when we need, especially for um, you know, during the winter weather season, so. Um, actually construction started today. Um, so uh Public Works Department kind of prepped the area over the past few weeks and uh the construction company actually started today. Um, construction should, should take um probably about a week or two. It's pretty much just a standard iron structure with a canvas um covering on uh blocks. Um, but it's a pretty solid and it's a, I think it's gonna be a good structure for them in the long run. So just again, wanna thank um Director Kalowski for his work on that. Um, just a reminder, the children's room in the library remains closed. Um, members of the community will recall, there was unfortunately a significant damage to the children's uh area due to a damaged and faulty water heater, um which the damage was significant, requiring replacement of carpeting, interior walls, light fixtures, pretty extensive the damage. Um, so it'll be closed for probably another couple of weeks. Um, as they're just continuing the work, if you go in there now, all the ceiling tiles are gone, it's completely gutted. Um, this is um being handled and managed by Maya, our insurance carrier. Um, and they've contracted with Service Master to complete the work on behalf of the community. Um, town departments have received the F Y twenty six budget instructions. Uh, budget requests will be due to the finance director and myself Monday, December second. Uh, in accordance with the select board's guidance, we are instructing departments for level funded budget requests. Um, additional information obviously will be made available as we receive more information from our partners, the school districts, uh state agencies. And also as the budget requests start coming in, um we'll keep the select board in check on as of, um as we just continue through the budget season. Um, as the chair mentioned, uh paving's starting tomorrow. They actually did a little bit of paving today on the section uh just over the dam, essentially just getting kind of that first uh base of pavement down on the dam and then um completely paving the mile stretch, good bless you, good bless you.
Thank you, excuse me.
For the one mile stretch over the next couple of days. Um, obviously just wanna thank the residents for their patience, um and recognize the impact that this is having. The initial plan was actually for, again, a full closure, uh but working with um, with the police department and uh, and um the contractors, one lane closure is sufficient in their opinion. Um, so members of the community will receive a notice in the mail from the water department um with respect to new lead and copper rule regulation revisions that went into effect last month. Um, as a part of these regs, we are required to maintain an inventory uh of our service lines that contain lead and some other um substances. Um, one of the challenges that we have is we don't have a comprehensive inventory of it. Um, so we sent out some communications over the past few weeks, asking for residents um to provide some information. Uh, but now we actually have to formally send, send a notice to areas that we believe may have lead service lines. Um, there's a lot to this, the letter actually kind of speaks with some detail about, you know, what this means, how you can get your service lines tested and then what, uh if you do have lead service lines, what the impact is and, and resources that are available to you. Obviously, it's a capital component to our water and, and sewer infrastructure, so um as a result of this, I think we'll, we'll inform our capital planning processes as well for just overall replacement. Um, there is a, an obligation of the community, if we do identify lead service lines, we do have an obligation to replace it, only if the resident decides to replace their portion as well. Um, which is included in the notice to residents, but just wanna put that out there for informational purposes as well. Any questions on the updates thus far?
Austin, question of five.
Yep.
Is there a, do we know a cutoff date for the lead? Like houses that were built after eighty-three or, you know?
I.
And we're talking about from the line to the house, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer, I, I can get that for you, Harry.
Just curious, uh you know, I mean, do we need to send it out to all five thousand homes? You know, or is there a cutoff date where?
No, so, so this is a kind of a select um amount of homes. Um, more so just, I think, some of the work that was done with Leslie and Sampson, our, our consulting engineer, um that kind of did some, some work on behalf of the town, identified certain, um certain addresses or areas of town that we believe may have uh lead service lines, but obviously we're asking all residents, right? Do we send out communications to all residents?
Okay.
Um, to be able to kind of do some work. Um, but again, just, this is a new regulation, um so this is kind of one of those mandates uh that we just have to get into compliance with and as we identify things as they come, we'll address them.
Follow up, do you? Yeah. If it's from the line to the house, does the uh homeowner absorb any of that cost or is that all town?
Yeah, so, so uh the town is responsible for a certain section, I can get that specific number for you. Um, essentially till like, there's like a tie in from the pipe to the service connection, we're responsible for that component.
Okay.
Um, and the resident, which is common, is responsible for the rest connecting to the house.
Okay.
To the chair, Austin, with the paving?
Yep.
I mean, they're obviously not gonna be done with the sidewalk or anything like that. Is that something they're gonna do through the winter or?
Yeah, so this is just paving, so they're gonna continue, right? So the, the overall project, they believe will be closed up by December, so that will include some of the sidewalk work. Um, obviously there's still some work on the dam where they have to install some of the sidewalks, install guardrails, but paving of the road and they still have to do striping, right, when paving is done. Uh, but paving of the road will be done this week.
But I, I'm just curious, like any damages done after it's paved, is that something they'll eat? Does the town have to eat that or?
So once the project's.
It's a pretty heavy machinery moving in and out of this, so.
Yeah, yeah, we, once the project's closed out, it's, it's our responsibility, so I think, I think we'll have to just make sure if there's any impact. They did extend some components of the project, so there's a component of Richard's Ave, you may have noticed that they um dug up, that wasn't originally part of the scope. Uh, we did appeal to um, to Mast D O T and they did approve um the change of scope to be able to extend a little bit more. Um, we also did some repairs of some pipes there as well, so they are responsive, obviously, when they damage things. Um, so we'll just have to keep a look and see if there's any additional damage, 'cause you're right, there's been a huge impact um from some of the heavy machinery.
Yeah, I mean, I know based on the weather, they gotta get the asphalt down or it's not gonna happen, but there's still a decent amount of work that looks like it's gotta be done. So that heavy machine is gonna tear up that, that asphalt, so. Just curious.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on it.
Yep.
Going back to the water, um is Muscat Park Pond holding up okay? In other words, have we, have, I know it's been a very dry season and I'm just wondering if there's plenty of water there and there's nothing to worry about.
Yeah, so actually we, I don't believe we've had a capacity issue in a little while now. Some of that was also just related to our unaccounted for water loss. Granted, our, I think our unaccounted for lau- water loss is still pretty high. Um, but we haven't received any indications from M A S D E P that, um, or D C R that we're against our draw limits per se. Just have a few more updates. Um, I just wanna congratulate our finance director and town accountant Donna Kuchar. Um, this was uh, she actually obtained her certified municipal treasurer designation. Now you ask, she's a town accountant, why do you care that she's a tre- certified treasurer now? She was a certified, she was a treasurer in a previous community. This is just a good practice, um this is something that was, is extremely difficult to obtain. Um, and there's a lot of work and she, she spent a lot of time studying, so I just wanna congratulate her, this is a huge key, achievement. Um, and I think she deserves some recognition, so just wanna congratulate her. Um, and then finally, there's been some comments in the community that I just wanna briefly address, there's a big topic. Um, so I don't suspect we'll go into deep detail here, but um just about some of the conditions of the schools, school facilities, um there's been comments out there that, um, and I know this came up at the last board meeting about um, you know, Glenwood crumbling foundations, things like that. Um, we are taking a look at the condition of the school facilities. Um, so much so, we're, we're doing some co-compliance work at Naqog. Um, we're also doing some co-compliance work at Glenwood, um just to get an overall assessment of the condition of the facilities. These are significant capital assets for the community. Um, we do not have any final report about what the needs are from either of the school buildings. So that also means that we don't have a magnitude, magnitude of costs, right? So I just wanna put that out there, so whatever you're hearing in the community, it's not real yet, right? We don't have an actual assessment. Um, we will get that, right? So and uh member Secman, you had a question, they actually didn't conduct the test of the um, they didn't conduct a core sample test yet, I thought they did.
Yeah.
Um, what they did is they actually had an engineer come out to say that they don't believe that the issue is a pirate tide issue, they believe it's basically for lack of gutters on Glenwood. Um, the district agreed to pay for a test, which I don't believe has been conducted yet. Um, but that will be done just because they, we wanna be thorough in our assessment. But we are doing a structural, we engage an engineer and an architect um to do just an overall co-compliance and structural assessment of both facilities to come back to inform our capital planning processes. Um, when that comes back, we'll try to take advantage of M S B A if possible um for some accelerated repair programs. Uh, but again, we do not know what the needs are, thus, wait for that report to come up and then we'll put that out there.
And if I can just follow up on the heels of that, I think we all, especially on this board, need to be mindful of any conversations that we have, um, when there's not known information, that it can be perceived that we know something that we don't actually know when we talk about it. And so just be mindful when you're talking to community members, um, how that's, that's received, especially given um our position on the board. Um, and it's, and the schools piece is also tricky because it's not only a town and uh re- resource, it's also working with the district, to Austin's point. So there's a lot of moving pieces there, so, um, thank you for that.
And I do apologize in about, well, it's right next door, but um before realizing that we had a select board meeting tonight, I um agreed to attend the Lions Club meeting. Um, I believe, I believe it starts at seven, so just before seven, I'll head over there to speak to them briefly and I'll come back.
Um, is there anything, ask one, one question, I was gonna say to Austin.
Um, on the library, um it's my understanding that that water heater was in the ceiling?
Yep.
Is that going back in the ceiling or are they relocating it?
Um, we, so I think we're working with the building inspector to possibly change that. Um, the challenge, we do have to change the configuration of the closet of which, upon which it was stored.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's not the only building that has a water heater that's elevated, it's just, I think it just speaks to lack of deferred, lack of maintenance um over the years, so um I don't think it's necessarily an issue that it was in the ceiling, I think it's more so that we just didn't take care of it, kind of thing.
Okay. And that'll be all part of our, hopefully our new facilities division where we're hopefully making plans to do our regular maintenance, so we don't have.
Yeah.
Excesses.
Yep. We also replaced a couple of water heaters in the annex recently too, that were also elevated.
Before or after they burst?
They didn't burst, it was before.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions, comments for Austin? I think we're okay for right now, thank you, Austin. Um, if the board's amenable, I would like to take new business next. Um, I was hoping to get the fire chief to stick around, but I know he had to leave because he had a, he has a commitment in Hubbardton. Um, is the board amenable to kind of moving new business? Full disclosure, I also have police academy graduation that starts at seven thirty, um that I was hoping to try to make, but I don't know how realistic that is, so. Um, but if we can take new business, and I believe these gentlemen are here for new business as well. So we have the ambulance, um I M A for the renewal of the current I M A with the town of Okham. Um, Austin, can you speak to this?
Yep, um, so just high level, again, as the chair mentioned, this is a renewal of, of the current I M A, um which was also approved by the Okham Select Board. Um, this is agreement between the town of Rutland and the town of Okham to provide um advanced life support EMS services to Okham residents. Um, something that kind of came um over the past few years when there was a, a challenge for the town of Okham uh to provide their own ambulance service. Uh, I believe our fire chief also served in an acting capacity as their fire chief, so recognizing an opportunity to kind of consolidate some services there. Um, so this is a kind of a standard I M A agreement to be able to provide those services, uh which also comes with a financial component to the town of Rutland. Uh, we will receive um twenty eight thousand in F Y twenty six and increasing one thousand dollars per year. And we also have the right, and we do um bill to insurance, so town of Okham does not receive um the ambulance proceeds from this, it goes into our general fund monies as well. Um, other than that, the no substantive changes other than just dollar values and then the terms. This is um a continuation of something that we're doing now.
Austin, if I, oh sorry, Austin, if I may, if I understand, kind of reading the synopsis quickly, um, we previously were using, borrowing one of their ambulances. Um, I don't think we were using it to service Okham specifically, but we were borrowing it as needed. And I think now that we have the, like, carried the new ambulance, um, we're not using that because that was in the oldest iteration of an ambulance, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Harry, you had something?
Yeah, I noticed that the agreement calls that we have to maintain two ambulances for this agreement. So do we have a third ambulance as a backup or anything?
No, so, so it's, it's the two ambulances that we utilize out of the town of Rutland, right? So it's just kind of speaking to our staffing levels. Um, and based off of that, you know, based off of population served, there's kind of a two ambulance minimum. So we're not adding a second ambulance there, we're just utilizing um the apparatus and the personnel that are in the station here.
Is there any other questions, comments from the board? Um, Austin, have you heard it? I, I mean, I haven't heard anything and I, this is probably more of a chief question than anything. Um, but our department has been okay with the, the agreement and everything also as far as the, the workload and, and everything.
Yeah, I think it's worked out well for both towns.
Um, is there anything else from anyone? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve and sign the ambulance I M A between the town of Rutland, Rutland and the town of Okham as presented. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve and sign the ambulance I M A between the town of Rutland Rutland and the town of Okham as presented.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? We'll call Harry.
Check the line.
Max and I.
Lejri.
Galvin.
Whitman I, thank you. Make sure we sign that before everybody leaves. Um I. Uh the past couple months, few months, there has been um some joint meetings between the R D I C and the E D C. Um Rutland Development and Industrial Commission and Economic Development Commission. Um I've attended um those meetings. And the kind of the hope of those two media of those meetings was to uh determine the charges and roles of the of the two groups. Um.
I was just wondering if you'd be willing to take C and D out of order before I go.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I, yeah. Sorry, I, um. We'll take C um to talk about the November and December meeting schedules. Um I believe last meeting uh Austin and town staff had requested we consider postponing the November twenty fifth meeting to December second. Which would be an off night and then moving our December twenty third meeting, which is the week of Christmas, to um December sixteenth. So that essentially we would not meet on the twenty fifth of November and then our December meetings would be off night meetings. Um part of that was so that we could do the tax recap um meetings in a timely fashion. Um and part of it was just given the holidays of the week of November twenty fifth and the week of December twenty third that we weren't meeting. We have to holiday weeks as well. Um is the board amenable to those changes for the rest of the calendar year?
It's okay with me.
December second to December sixteenth.
Yeah. Sixteenth is fine, I can't make the second.
Okay, would you be able to do a Zoom or?
Possibly.
Okay.
Possibly.
I think that that was hoping to be the tax recap hearing, right?
Okay.
Class classification.
Classification, thank you. Yeah. Um I know that off.
December sixteenth and then the second.
I know the off nights are are tough for everyone, so um Paul, does that work for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So it sounds like a majority of us, it works. Tom, I hope that maybe we can get you in on Zoom.
Yeah, I'll try to do the Zoom.
Um at least for this, you know, for for one or both.
Yep.
Okay. Um do you want a formal motion? Um then I would entertain a motion. Um to cancel the November twenty fifth meeting and reschedule the December meetings to December second and December sixteenth.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Conversation.
Secman I.
Max and I.
Lejri.
Galvin.
Whitman I. And then following in the heels of that, because they are, those are off week meetings. Um we would not be able to sign the warrant and treasury warrants for those um meetings. So um we are also looking to um choose a designated to sign the warrant for um November twenty fifth. December ninth and December twenty third. Um and I believe the recommendation is that it's the chair um for for that.
Second. Yeah.
So is there, I need a motion first.
Uh make a motion that the chair be the uh person to sign the warrant, was it?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh I move to delegate signing authority to the chair of the board for treasury warrants for the remainder of two thousand twenty four calendar year.
Yeah, and can we just amend and payroll too?
And payroll.
I'm sorry, I forgot to include that.
Okay. Uh.
Treasury warrant and payroll.
Treasury warrants for the remainder and, I'm sorry, treasury warrant and payroll for the remainder of the two thousand twenty four calendar year.
Payroll.
Thank you.
Second.
Conversation. We'll call Harry.
Secman I.
Max and I.
Lejri.
Galvin.
Whitman I, thank you. Now we will, thank you, Austin, for um that. We will move into, back to the R D I C E D C conversation. Those meetings were held, I think they began the end of the second half of August, maybe, September and October. Um the hope was to kind of see how the two boards and commissions, if there was a need for both both commissions and um how they could work together. Um out of those meetings came um R D I C and E D C developing charges, kind of in collaboration with each other. Um I've asked that the charges be included in our packet tonight. Um and more uh for um. Just to begin to look at and I am hopeful that possibly at on one of our December meetings, we could have a a three-way joint meeting. With E D C and R D I C at the, maybe at the start of meeting or something, to make sure everybody's on the same page before official approval. I don't know how that was communicated to to the chairs. Um I believe one of the conversations, kind of in Mike and Randy, please, as chairs of uh R D I C and E D C. Correct me if I misspeak by all means. Um kind of the overarching thought is R D I C is um kind of the land management group. Of uh town-owned properties, developable ta- town-owned properties. And E D C would work with the local businesses almost in a um business association kind of capacity to um. To to bring and keep businesses. Um and it would be a very, uh the charges are, would have to be collaborative. There's conversation as to if there is potential to, this board could essentially make economic development a subcommittee. Of R D I C. Um but generally, our uh generally, boards and committees don't have long-term appointed subcommittees. Um we could do that if that's the board's wish. Um the other consideration is potentially having almost like a liaison member. Um one member from one or both of the boards serves on the opposite um committee as a as a full-time appointee. Or uh we could suggest or put into charges that there's a liaison um uh member between the boards and committees. Um Mike and Randy, I don't know if you guys have anything to to talk about that kind of um relationship piece as far as the collaborative. Work that needs to continue to happen.
Well, the only thing you said previously that I, just for clarification, you said town-owned land. It's not just town-owned land though. So we just don't wanna send the wrong impression.
Yep.
Um but as far as collaboration, yeah, I mean, we met, I don't remember, three or four times as a group. Put together a list of what we thought the needs of um the town were. And then over time, we segregated where we thought the E D C had some expertise and the expertise loosely used. And the R D I C had expertise, their interest, kind of assigned responsibilities there, and that's how that uh charge came up.
Yep. And I know a lot of the conversation was just how to ensure that not just for the current. Current sitting R D I C and E D C, but going for, looking forward also, um that there is that continued collaboration. Um between the two, because there is a lot of similarities. Um and there's some key differences also, but that they very much need. The sense seems to be that they very much need to work collaboratively and closely together, not just now, but but forever. Um so I don't know if either of you wanna speak to the charges that were developed. We have them printed here. Um I wanted the board here to be able to see them and have any conversation if they have any questions or comments for either of you. Um and then um probably at the next meeting, um the board generally likes to kind of review things for a little while. And then, like I said, maybe have, if the boards are amenable to a a joint meeting or something that for a short time, just.
I'd be fine with that. I mean, Ms. Tamika has already broached that subject, trust me.
Um I know one of the things from our board's perspective, I think, as well as from the community, we heard, you know, throughout is a a need and a want for economic development in town. Um and I think there's a lot of work that's been done, kind of laying some of the groundwork through the master plan, through some of the open space stuff. As well as the work that both boards and committees or both of the commissions uh your commissions have done. To identify um not only parcels, but also opportunities um and interest. And so um economic development takes a little bit of time for sure, but if we can try to work together with a concerted effort to to prioritize it. For something that's sustainable and and fits well in Rutland, I think is is everybody's hope, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if I may, um I sent down an email today because one of the suggestions that came from those joint meetings was that the R D I C have a regular meeting schedule. Um so after polling the members for what worked best for them, they're gonna start meeting on the first Thursday of every month. Um and then I believe the E D C meets on the second Wednesday of each month, third Wednesday of each month. Um so each committee will be or commission will be meeting on a monthly basis. Um and then, you know, there's time in between, so that hopefully makes it a li- little easier for a liaison to maybe attend the other meeting. Um so just so folks know that that's happening as well.
Thank you. And I think um I think some of the kind of pendulum swing from different boards has been not clear kind of charges for for either R D I C or E D C. E D C is a little bit m- more newly formed. Um but coming out of this, I really hope that that this board continues the work that we've done with the bylaws. And the commit- and the charges and policies, so that we can set something sustainable, so that. Uh the groups know what they're they're doing and it's not just at the whim of, well, we want you to focus on this and not worry about anything else or or anything. So that's kind of my my hope and I hope your board also feels similar. Um. Do you have any, does anybody have any questions for for Mike or Randy? Thank you guys for coming, I appreciate it. And um do you have any comments or questions for us? I.
Not at the moment, I don't.
How?
I'd be interested to hear your opinions of the of the charges.
Yeah, I I don't know if the board, the rest of the board, I've seen them, so I want some of the conversation with the rest of the board for sure. Um they're, you know, your comments and and everything, so.
Yeah, I think I think when you folks discuss that, that would be of interest to to me to be able to come and listen to that discussion.
Yeah. I'm hoping a little bit that if people have comments or questions tonight for it, that we can work on that. So that when we do have a a joint meeting and look to do the approval, that we have the questions answered. If there's any tweaking, I know E D C, you're planning to meet, I believe, next week. And I don't know, then R D I C might meet.
December fifth.
December fifth, so I don't remember our dates, but yeah, uh before our.
Probably December sixteenth would probably be the best rating to do it.
Right. So if we could, you know, if there was any commentary for charges that the that the commissions could. Does anyone have any?
Well, go ahead and help me, my comment.
No, I I will take a backseat to Harry, anyway.
I just, I mean, for the first time, I I I sense I get a clear indication of what E D C is gonna do and what R D I C is gonna do. And I guess for the first time, it doesn't look like, yes, they're cooperating, but they're not walking on each other's toes. And that seems to be a good uh a good focus for the town of where we wanna go in developing eco- uh business in town, economic development. So I I like what I see. You guys did a great job, thank you.
I think they're best friends now. I feel good about it.
I think we need a third board.
I didn't hear a comment. I mean, we're supposed to.
I think let's organize some people and get a third committee. I think that'll help.
Says the one who's anti-committees.
I'm just being fresh.
Yeah.
So in all. I think we're all busy, right? I'm a little disappointed that we're not gonna make more discussion tonight. I realize you wanna digest it. But in turn, you have two guys that are sitting here tonight that may not be able to come back at your next meeting. We, E D I C, has felt like we've kicked the can down the road for three flipping years, right? Because the direction has been changed. We have never felt there's ever been any competition or stepping on toes of R D I C. We've had different visions in our mind, but yet I I just, I don't like to prolong things, for any of us, right? Just my opinion.
So to the chair, what what is it you're, what is it we're supposed to be approving? That they're both separate boards and?
Well, so they currently.
I I don't get it.
Except that my thought, and not to interrupt, I apologize.
Yeah.
But my thought was you're gonna read the charges, you agree or disagree with the charges and go from there. And if there was questions or why we did certain things, you're gonna ask either one of us.
Well, I guess, you know. What's the need for both? If you're both, my philosophy's always been, if the if you both wanna go towards the same, in the same direction of the town prospering, development. Why the two committees? Wha- what is the need? That's a serious question, I don't know. What what's the need for both? If you're both doing the same thing?
I don't think it's the same thing necessarily, but I think you need to ask your own board that, because your board is the one that formed the two committees. I don't know why they did that.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm not saying it was a good or bad idea, but that's that's where you need to look, inter- you know, introspective.
Yeah. Well, I think that's a fair place to look. I I again, if we're all trying to accomplish the same thing, why do we need two separate boards to do so?
I think this is one of the conversations in one of the meetings, one of the the meetings between the two commissions was, is there a need for both? And I think um it kind of came out that that there was value to having both, given the delineation here of one board that can focus more on.
Yeah.
On the property piece, the the land aspect piece. And another board that was doing more of the business relationship um. And and promoting.
But the property piece and the business piece is gonna have to come together.
Well, right, and well, that's.
So what's the purpose?
And that was some of the conversation.
Again, you guys know my philosophy, it's been the same for almost three years now. I I think. We have a lot of committees, and again, I'm not, this isn't against these guys, they're all, they all want the same thing. I just, I feel like it's one extra step a lot of times, so is it necessary? Merge the two of them together. I I ju- you know, make it one entity. No, of course, well, what whatever that, but that's my philosophy. I think it's too many. There's no need for the two boards to do the same thing.
Yep. Well, and I think some, and that, I mean, like I said, that was some of the conversation that the the two commissions had. Um was, is there a need for both and how and how to make sure, if there is, how to make sure they both work? I think some of the consideration is that to make a larger committee, then you have quorum issues. Um.
Why does that have to be a larger committee?
Well, then it would be um potentially, and it would be completely and totally redesigning. The the charges of either committee and then the cycles of.
If it matters to town, then that's the right thing to do.
And no, and I don't disagree, but then also the cycles of the appointment schedule, because maybe there's people that aren't interested in in that piece. Or are better suited to a a different, a different piece. And given the appointment, R D I C was formed under M G L. It was accepted as M G L in the sixties, I think, we decide, determined, um going back to town meeting minutes. Um and so to dissolve, R D I C would be a town meeting vote and a town meeting discussion. Um Economic Development was formed um at the select board level and never went to town meeting. Um but I think the kind of consensus was that there was value to the work that both individual entities were doing. That the individuals serving on both entities had different strengths um and interests and how to make sure that 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 work continued. I I don't disagree that sometimes more boards are.
Like, again, if it works, it works. I hope it works. I'm just saying, to me, I don't know, all the extra steps, you know.
Yep.
But you know, if I, excuse me, Randy, but if I can just jump in on what Randy said a minute ago about everybody's time being important. You know, we just spent four meetings, you know, two to three hours doing what we did. And now we're sitting here with our our decision makers saying, well, I don't know whether you should have one committee or two committee, why do we have to and have one? Well, what the heck do we waste, you know, sixteen hours or whatever it was, doing what we did if you folks can't. Or don't agree or can't come to an agreement over what we already did? I mean, it's ridiculous.
I guess firstly, I think that now that we have these charges, marching orders for each of you. And we finally got to that point, we should let you see what you can do.
Yeah, but shouldn't the, shouldn't the. Shouldn't the charge come from you to us? I mean, I I got a very simple question. How in heaven's name, over the last however many years these committees have been formed, how have you, the selectmen, I don't mean you personally, you, the selectmen, how have you appointed people? If they didn't have a charge? What what did you, what was the criteria that you appointed them to?
Great question.
Yep.
It's a great question.
Well, obviously, it wasn't.
That's the problem, a lot of times, that's the problem.
Well, that's the point, there wasn't.
And that's, and that's, I mean.
Right.
That's some of what came out as we started doing the appointments, was that a lot of the boards and committees didn't have charges that could be found anywhere. But they felt very strongly that they knew what the their charge was, so I think in a spirit of trying to be collaborative. in a spirit of trying to be collaborative, we as select board want to understand what what the existing boards and committees see their work to be. We look at historically what what has been done, where things need to go, if there's MGL involved, we look, we look to MGL. Um and and that. So I think in the spirit of trying to be collaborative, because if you you know as well as any of us, if we came down and said, this is your charge to a s- a committee that has been seated for how a mayor.
Well, my point is you may now look at that charge, those charges and go, this is ridiculous, this isn't what we think they should be doing. So I I think you folks should be coming up with what you think our charges should be. And then we sit down together and we say, okay, this is what EDC thinks theirs should be, this is what we think ours should be, this is what you folks think should be, and then come to an agreement on what it is. Because like I said, we just, it sounds like we wasted twelve hours getting to where we are now and we're no closer, you know, to having an established charge than we were before we got here.
I.
I'm done.
I wouldn't say that it was a wasted twelve hours. I think very strongly that we needed to have some clarity from the two existing seated boards and commissions, how you envisioned working together, if that was still even going to be feasible. Um as well as at the board level here, we had conversations in the past as far as uh uh as far as we need more economic development and how does that happen? And so I think.
But since you're the decision makers, shouldn't the shouldn't the the higher, the hierarchy of the discussion come from you? I mean, it would be kinda like, y- y- you wanna hire me for a job and I come in and say, okay, here's what, here's what my job's gonna be. And you know, I wanna be a jet mechanic and you want me to be a a car washer. I mean, th- that just doesn't make sense, doesn't jive. Okay.
I guess my question, are each of you happy with these charges?
Absolutely, I wouldn't be sitting here, we wouldn't be sitting here.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if you're happy with these charges and we're looking at these charges and you've come up and said to us, this is what we think we should do, then as a board, we should respect that and say, fine, if that's what you think.
Fine, but I I hear at least one member saying, and no offense, Tom, I I, one member saying that wha- what it is isn't, you know. So you you guys haven't discussed, fine.
Tamika. So I was just gonna say, um since the joint meetings over the summer and and this is nothing to RDIC, just 'cause you guys haven't really met since then. I feel like the EDC has really found their groove since we've kind of gone through this process. Um and I think they've been doing a really great job of kind of getting on board with it. Um they've had two ribbon cutting ceremonies. Um we partnered with them for the food drive that we're doing um with the raffle at town hall, um.
Nobody's challenging that, Tamika. I think these guys all deserve credit.
Oh, yeah, no, so I just wanna say, I feel like they have a direction now.
I'm only trying to streamline this town's process, whatever the process is for any, to make it the most efficient one. That's all I've ever said. I'm not against any one of them. I just, I just wanna make sure that whatever process is in place, i- it's the most efficient one, that's it. That's all I've ever said, that's all I ever, you know, if you guys can do it and and two separate boards, then fine, do it.
No, and I agree, I think my only point.
I'm not an expert in either, so I don't know.
My only point, I guess, is that I think they feel like with the charge, you guys, they felt like that charge allowed them to move forward and they've been able to do that.
Um and I think, I I appreciate the time, both Economic Development and RDIC voted on um their, the charges as presented, so their committees are in full agreement of these charges as well. Um they were discussed at the inter, the joint meetings and then voted on individually. Um I don't know if there's com- if anybody has any specific questions or concerns about the this charges as presented. Um if the board's comfortable, we, I I'm fine to um approve and adopt these as pre- presented. Um that's totally fine. I just wasn't sure, I know this board tends to like to have uh time to process things, and so I wanted to make sure that we had ample time for that.
There's really nothing to process, I I, you know, I have my opinion, the rest of the board has his. Somebody make a motion. It's as simple as that.
One brief.
Can I say anything?
Uh you had a question?
Randy first, please.
So, Tom, in in, I understand where you are coming from. I'm a firm believer of of streamlining things and we all can sit home a little more often at home and instead of going to meetings that we don't feel like we're doing. I think the one comment that I would have to you is, if there was a Rutland Business Association in town that was active, there wouldn't be an Economic Development Committee, because I feel the Economic Development Committee is similar to the way the Rutland Business Association used to be a number of years ago to do that, right? And there really wasn't a Rutland Business Association version of land management, for the lack of better terms, to do it, right? And I think down deep, there there's a, there's a need for two different committees with a clearer path than we, especially Economic Development, has been pushed and pulled in different directions from other town officials that we have changed their direction. With a town planner and a town administrator kinda on the same page, kinda nurturing us in one direction, we're not fortunate enough or good enough to have a secretary like RDIC has, so we gotta have to fumble through it on our own. That would be my one objection, but we have a town planner or administrator that will be there to try to fill the shoes of Tamika of doing that job. That's my one beef with Mr. Sullivan being greater than I have.
You said fill the shoes of Tamika, I just said impossible.
Okay, no, that's, I understand, yeah, fair enough, thank you.
And a lot of the feedback we had heard from busi- local businesses in the past when we were trying, before EDC was formed, trying to restart the RBA, the Rutland Business Association, was that they didn't have time. They were interested in being able to participate in something, but they didn't have the time or person power to to do that work. And so having a commitment from the town, hearing that the town had a strong commitment to, desire for more economic development and commitment, how can we, how can we as a community nurture that? Um and at the time, it was kind of in the hu- in the in the height of the heights property um process going through. And so it was a lot more to add to to RDIC at that time also. So I think that that's kind of a little bit of where that goes.
Think this gentleman wanted this.
Mike, name and address, please.
Mike DeBaracus Stevens Way. Yeah, I just wanna say, as part of the EDC, those two gentlemen over there, both uh from the RDC, E and EDC chairmen, along with the rest of us, put in a lot of hard work on developing this, uh.
You lost your mic.
I think you muted.
Okay. Sorry, it keeps on muting on me over here, I'm trying to, you got me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Hopefully it doesn't mute out again. Um no, uh I had a chance to sit on the RDCI meeting as a liaison from the EDC. There is, we are doing two distinct jobs. One, EDC with the property and us with the business. And I wanna say that there is a cohesiveness working together. We both have tasks to do and given the chance, listening to both of us, accepting these charges and giving us the chance to move forward, uh is the best thing to do. I'm newer than both uh Randy and Mike are, they've been doing this for years. And I bring kind of that newer voice into it. There is a lot of work to be done and we can do it. And we should put that in the past, let's get these charges accepted, accept us as two committees, see what we can do together. And I'm working and if I'm continuous to be that liaison, I think we can have a lot of positivity. And that's, I just wanted to say that. Let's move forward, 'cause we did put like, uh Mike and Randy, what, four hours of work into this? Uh let us get it, move on and get it done more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um so we have the charges in front of us. If no one has comments about or questions about the charges, like I said, I'm perfectly amenable to accepting the charges for the EDC and RDIC as presented tonight. Um and then if we dec- if we want to continue and have a joint meeting, if everyone is amenable, it doesn't necessarily have to be in a December meeting, it could be a little bit later or whatever, we don't have to. Um so it's really, like I said, I wasn't sure how much conversation this board was gonna wanna have about it, so.
Question?
Sure.
Will you make a motion, should we make it for individual or combined?
Make it combined.
Combined?
Mm-hmm.
Then I make a motion, the board accept the charges for the Economic Development Commission and for the Rutland Develop and Industrial Commission.
Okay.
As presented?
As amended.
As presented?
As presented, yes.
And Paul gave a second. Any other conversation? We'll call Harry.
Suck that eye.
Matt's an eye.
Lederer eye.
Yalvan eye.
Lederer eye.
Good luck, guys.
Amen.
Done.
I apologize, I realized I printed the wrong agenda for the board and the one you have doesn't include Randy. I am, the one posted on the website does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, that's okay. Um I was gonna say, I saw that there was, yeah, um so, yes.
I'll ask a question on the motion that was just made.
Yes.
Just for clarity, please. So we have talked about, you know, putting a liaison to each one of us and we have had internal conversations of how to do that, whether we have a full-time person or somebody from EDIC sits on RDIC's committee or vice versa to improve our communication. We think that's one area that several committees have the challenge of communicating properly. So are you gonna leave that up to the two men in the back of the room that will make the wise decision amongst their committees, or do you choose to have an opinion?
So I think that right now there is, I don't believe there's an opening on economic development. I believe there's an opening on RDIC. Um I kinda, and I go back and forth a little bit on this and for the board's conversation, I'm kind of hesitant to designate a a definite position that has someone kind of serving both committees officially. Um I kind of go a little bit more to the to the liaison piece and um I is that economic development would would designate someone, a liaison, to go to the RDIC meetings and RDIC would designate one of their members um to go to uh the EDC meetings, at least currently. Um given that um that there's not currently an open, a similar opening on EDC for for that piece as well. Um whether it's the same or or whatever. But I I'm.
I think through the chair, I think you guys should decide, it's your boards, you decide who.
Well, I think Randy's point is, what we're looking to do is have a voting member for each committee and we can't do that. You you folks have to appoint him. But but if Randy, if Randy says his committee is already overstaffed, that that's a problem. It's not a problem for the RDIC, we could, we could take another member and it could be a member of the EDC. You folks would have to add a member to the EDC for that to happen.
I mean, I can step down if Mike would like to fill my shoes on this issue.
Which, Mike?
You.
Not a chance, buddy.
I see, if I may, I see, I see value in having the liaison, so there's clearer communication between the two. I don't know, I think I still like the separation to see, again, see what the two committees can do and have their own peace.
Part of my philosophy as an individual, which I know Mike and I disagree on this peacefully, is I would rather appoint somebody, if I can't go as chair to RDIC, I would ask somebody similar to what Mike did last meeting, 'cause I had a conflict and Mike went on behalf of the committee to do there, right? He's got no power, but yet he can bring things back and forth and there's no voting member to do it. I think that's easier with everyone's schedule as full as it is, that I hate to take on that appointment position and not be able to go to every meeting over there, or vice versa the other way. I understand that they need a member, so I understand where Mike is coming from, that hey, give us one of your people to do it, but I'm not certain if that's the right decision.
I I'm, I.
Would be just my personal opinion.
I'm, I kind of agree with your philosophy, Randy. I would rather see just, and again, it's not necessarily that you have the same person, but just, again, busy schedules and everything, being able to appoint a member of a committee to attend one or the other. Doesn't necessarily have to be the same person.
One way or the other, it doesn't create any hat burn for me. Randy and I will work it out.
I, that would be my preference at this point, would just be to let them.
I should, I should.
Put out a, I would, and I think where I'm coming from is I would rather put out a, uh, continue to put, to put out a call for new membership across the board, and if one of the new members happens to be an EDC member that is the 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 one that the board chooses to appoint, so be so be it, but that doesn't have to be a a requirement, that there's not an RDIC spot held for an economic development, or there's not an economic development held for an RDIC. I think sometimes, um and I've said this many times, that we have the same people involved in a whole lot of different things in town, um especially town government, and I really would like to try to create opportunities for people um to get involved in different aspects, um different people to get involved in different aspects. So um that's also one of where I.
Good, so the member was not part of the motion, so.
Correct, the member was not like.
You don't even have to deal with it, Randy and I will figure out how to do it.
Right, but it sounds, I mean, it sounds like from, uh at least, I don't know, Harry and Paul, how you feel, it sounds like kind of Jen, Tom and I are a little bit more of, have a, will point whomever we we want to either board a committee and then they can figure out um a liaison versus a specific appointment.
Well, we don't need any appointments right now.
You know, I'm.
No, no, I know.
Right, I'm looking, I'm getting, well, we appoint alternates or we appoint individuals, but how do you get into appointing somebody that you're trying to get to involve in both places but not make it permanent? So I agree, I think you guys should work it out, absolutely.
That's what we decided, done.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Moving on?
Yeah, moving on.
Okay.
You haven't approved.
Randy said.
Would RDIC and EDC find value in trying to have a joint meeting with select board or not currently with these charges you feel?
I think now that the charges are established, I'm not sure what the need of it is.
Okay, that's good.
But you, if you folks think there's a reason.
No, no.
I mean, I'm more than happy.
I was gonna go Christmas shopping that night, so.
I had a root canal stinger.
Which is more fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get the opinion?
Um we have, uh.
Nice to see you.
Sorry, Tamika. Um one more un- item under new business, um and that is, sorry, I'm looking. It's um, the.
Information is in your packets, I just printed the wrong agenda.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I was just looking for the agenda to make sure I. Um we have a special license for sale of wine, um Coldbrook Springs Winery, a Jordan Farm Dairy. Um and this is for um Randy Tamika, correct me if I'm wrong, um to be able to offer wine sales from Coldbrook Springs Winery during uh the Turkey, Jordan Dairy Farm, Jordan Turkey Farm, um turkey pickup and everything.
Yes.
The week of Thanksgiving.
So um the the dates before you are November twenty sixth and November twenty seventh. Um when Randy had first approached me, I wasn't sure um the mechanism by which we could do this, so I reached out to the ABCC and they informed me that a one-day liquor license is valid for on-premise consumption only. And in this case, they would be looking to sell bottles of wine that people would then take home for off-premise. Um in this particular situation, um the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources um approves these type of licenses when they're associated with an agricultural event. Um this is all pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one thirty eight, Section fifteen F, which was included as well. Um so if you read in the language, the process is essentially, um the applicant gets approval from the state, which they have received. Then they get approval from the local licensing authority and then a copy of that approval gets sent to the ABCC. Um the board does not currently have a fee schedule for this right now, um it's probably something worthwhile for the future. Um Mass General Law stipulates that the maximum fee you can charge for this is fifty dollars, either way. Um but essentially Randy has everything in in place that he needs. Um I did ask for the same documentation that we would ask for with a one-day, which includes the certificate of liability with liquor liability as well as the tip certification, because they may offer sampling of the wine before um residents, or you know, not just residents, folks purchase it. Um and then the last piece was, oh, one second. Oh, I'm sorry, it also went for internal approval today and was approved by both the police chief and the fire chief.
And I believe um Coldbrook Springs Winery is on the approved, um.
Yes, they are on the state's approval list of vendors.
Yes. Does the board have any questions or comments? Um did, so currently there is no fee collected, is that correct?
So that's really at the board's discretion. Technically, we don't have a fee that's been adopted for this, um. So that's really at the board's discretion. Technically, we don't have a fee that's been adopted for this, um, so my recommendation is perhaps we look at bringing this back, maybe with an application for the future, um, in case this happens again with one of our local farms, um, but for tonight, I would say it's at the board's discretion if you charge the fifty dollars or not, or up to fifty dollars.
They have to pay fifty dollars for, to the, what did I see here? Not to us.
Yes, so the fifty dollars would be to us.
On the Mass General Law?
So the local licensing authority can charge up to fifty dollars if we so choose.
And that's the same thing we charge anybody that looks for a one-day.
We actually charge sixty for a one-day. We charge sixty for an in-town and for an out-of-town vendor, we charge one-twenty. But for this particular type of license, we can only charge up to fifty.
Do we have to formulate a special for the fifty bucks? Do we have to put together a formal fee for fifty dollars if you do it?
I would advise maybe the board just vote to add it to the fee schedule and then that way we publish it and it's, it's available for people, so they know.
First time doing this, Randy?
Sure, yeah. We, we, we offered wine a number of years ago and had no problems and it was very successful and someone came and bought their turkey at the eleventh hour on Wednesday and says, do you have a permit for this? And I says, no. And I says, do you need a permit? And she says, well, I think you do. And we left it at that. And then we never did it from there because we just, we didn't know how to do the process, doing it right. And people have asked for wine, I'm not a wine drinker myself, but people had asked for wine before the turkey sales and our turkey sales have grown uh, to the size that we are now, that is, has grown. And we just trying to do the value-added product at the farm to do it. Uh, originally, we had talked to some other wineries to come that would partner just with us in the past and they've had some challenges and then I just asked Coldbrook if they would participate with us. I mean, there's others that may wanna consider it in the future, but, um.
I mean, I agree with marketing. I think it's great, you know, uh, uh, so what are we, I guess, Mike, what are we being asked here? To approve the license?
To, a motion to issue a special license for, um, the dates provided as presented.
Okay.
So for two days?
For two days. Yep. And the license you guys will sign has all that information on it.
Two days.
And.
Okay, but we also need a motion for the fifty dollars?
Well, no, that's only if you guys choose to charge it tonight. I would bring back adding it, well, unless you wanna add it to the fee schedule tonight, you could.
I, I mean, I, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea, good for the two days, I have no problem with it, but I also think the fee should be paid because everybody else pays a fee.
So then I would recommend making a, a separate motion, um, to include the, uh, fifty-dollar special license fee on the fee schedule and then I can add that.
We both, we separate motions.
I, I would do two separate, just so it's not tied to this applicant.
So, I guess the. And I'm, I guess I'm fine with it. The other kind of consideration for me is to not do the fee this time and then add it to our policy fee schedule because this is something that's brought forward as like, hey, we can do this. But on the flip side, when the marketplace came to us and said, hey, we'd like to do this for the, um, seasonal alcohol, we did.
Seasonal license, created a new fee.
We created, we created the fee and we created the fee and charged them the fee right away.
I'm pretty sure everybody else is paying the fee. Even the church pays a fee for the one-day license, I mean, we should.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, no, that's, I just.
Just stay consistent, you know?
Yep.
Um, alright, so what is the official license called?
It's a special license.
Just a special license, so I make a motion to approve the special license
Special license.
uh, for DBA Coldbrook Springs Winery at nine oh five Old Coldbrook Road, Barry, Mass. Alright?
Uh, as presented.
Uh, as presented.
For the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh.
For the twenty-sixth, November twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Do I have to mention?
Fifty?
No, the Jordan?
Um.
Jordan, uh, Jordan.
At, I would say at Jordan.
At Jordan's file, okay?
Nine AM to ten PM.
Nine AM to ten PM. Anything else, Randy?
Um, and to charge a fee of fifty dollars.
And to charge a fee of fifty dollars.
I'll second that.
Is there any other conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Second I.
Matt's in I.
Dry.
Yalvin I.
White man I.
Would you like to make a motion to add that to the fee schedule?
Yes, please. Well, I, I.
Make a motion to add that to the fee schedule.
Second.
Conversation, roll call, Harry.
Second I.
Matt's in I.
The dry.
Yalvin I.
White man I.
Um, and maybe Tamika just document, uh, this process and I don't know if it's worth creating or adding a application opportunity just so that we make sure we have all the, you know, 'cause I feel like the application process has just been more helpful in making sure we have all the required documentation and process, um.
Yeah. Essentially, I think I'll probably just duplicate what we do for a one-day liquor license and then we'll just have the additional requirement of having to provide proof that the state has approved it.
Yep.
I mean, I can't imagine if this isn't successful, that Randy wouldn't wanna do this every year, you know, in cooperation with Cold Springs, whoever, special self.
Thank you. Um, so. Um, I believe that covers all of our new business, um, moving back to old business. Um, we have the, um, select board policies, board and committee appointment policy, and building use policy, um, here. The building use policy, I believe, is the application um, in process for the community center, the building on Glenwood, um, as well as the library meeting room, um, policy. Um, and I don't know, um, I think some of the challenges, um, for both buildings, come, sometimes in the community is the access and availability, um, for, uh, organizations, entities, town um, entities to be able to, uh, legitimately reserve the space. Um, and what that process looks like as far as the approval process or who's kind of managing them. Um, I think currently the building on Glenwood is the Council on Aging currently, um, I think, um, and the library is through the library and the Board of Trustees, I believe. As an elected board, the library has a little bit of a of a different process with the, the elected Board of Trustees, um.
Yeah, I may, I was just gonna add, I, I know that, um, one of the concerns that ha- has come up as well with the community center is, um, not, not being clear what supplies and materials can be used, such as tables and chairs, because some have been designated for use by the Friends of COA, which is different than the Council on Aging and the center itself. Um, so sometimes people will come with the expectation that they can use those only to find out at the time of the event that they can't. Um, so I think maybe that would need some clarification as well.
And I think some of it also has been some of the consideration, and this probably goes a little bit into Serf Safe and everything, but access to the kitchen,
Hmm.
um, space as well, just that, um, if there's a, a town group that needs to ha, or wants to do something with the kitchen space, they haven't been able to.
Through the chair, I think, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jen.
I was just gonna, why, why would somebody not be able to use tables and chairs?
Because the Friends of the Council on Aging feel that they purchased them and so.
And they don't, and they, they lend them to the Council on Aging.
Were they purchased with town funds?
No, they were purchased with the COA funds.
Okay.
I mean, uh, friends of.
But I think they're stored, I think they're stored together oftentimes with, like, I don't know how much the Council on Aging has, um, and this might be some areas that we need for clarification and inventory as to what, um.
Yeah. Yep. What's what?
What's what?
Yeah.
Um.
Through the chair, this is one of the biggest frustrations in town, though.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of community, a lot of people in this community that feel that that's not a community center. And anytime they've tried to use it for something, now anytime I've ever dealt with, with Nancy, she's been completely professional and oh, she's been great. I mean, I, we've used it a couple times for film night, for football and never an issue, so, you know, what you hear and what's actually fact is not always the same thing, but I know that is frustrating. People say, that's a community center and, you know, why isn't the community allowed to use it? So, I, I think that, that, that's tough sometimes, is the, is what we actually call the building, you know?
What I, what I've heard on the equipment issue is that they don't have a problem lending the, the, the Friends don't have a problem lending the equipment to the COA. It's that it gets used so much if it breaks, then they don't have it anymore, 'cause it was theirs to begin with and they're trying to preserve it as much as possible. That's why they're.
No, it's, it's, yeah.
But I think having some sort of delineation between what, where the equipment that can be used for community resources versus what is only for
Yeah.
COA use or something, whether it's separate storage or whatever, um, I think also having a itemized or an itinerary or
Right.
list of the condition of the, the build, the building slash rooms and some of the stuff in those rooms. There's been, um, I know in the past, there's been a lot of finger pointing as to this mini-blind was broken and by this person, but that person didn't have access to a room and, and so um, how that, that looks also, um, just that there's clear, kind of, you know, I, we've been over there for the, um, uh, Citizens Police Academy stuff and there's, you know, there's some big things that I was like, uh, we need like facilities and Jen, to your point, if we can move forward with a facilities department, um, or a facilities group with DPW that could kind of take on some of that, um, I think would be helpful for sure.
Yeah, I think coming up with a plan, a system to where, because the, the community has, they should have a right to have access to that space.
Um.
Right. They should, yeah.
Right.
You know, it's nobody's fault, it's just, but it's a shared space.
Right. Right.
They, you know.
And I went back to the town meeting minutes for when that building was taken and it was for, designated for community use.
Hmm.
Um, broadly, uh, for community use and not specifically, and there has been nothing that I could find formally reallocating it solely to senior use, um, and if that exists by all means, but you know, whether it's been,
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
um, I don't think it's ever, I'm confident that it has never been a town meeting discussion, um, or anything of that nature.
Yeah. But even, even to, to switch buildings, even over here, I know for a fact there have been programs during the summer that have asked to use the space over here and they've been flat out
Yeah. Yeah.
beat it.
Right.
Don't even, you're not coming in. And there's nobody in there. The building was empty, so that, there's no need to that. I mean, they can shut off
Right. Right.
the library, so it's, it's a town building.
Right.
The town citizen should be allowed to have access to that building, in my opinion, you know, with, with the proper forms being filled out and
Yep.
and that's just not happening.
You know, it's a bigger issue where regarding the trustees. That's 'cause by their contract, by their agreement, they're responsible for renting out the place, it's up to them by their actual contract, so
Yeah.
But it, but, but it's a town building, that everybody's taxes go to pay for this building, they should have use for it.
It's a. Right. Then you need. Right.
I know that, so you'd have to change the contract of the trustees then.
So, how do we?
But, uh, we have access to the contract? I'm not aware of a formal, yeah, contract.
But anyway.
For library, we're gonna hand up.
I, yeah, yeah.
I don't know what that is, but.
Oh, Michelle.
It's just, you know, Michelle, hold on a second. Um, I mean, I know that there are with it being the trustees and everything, that there is a di, a slightly different process, um, but a lot of again, it's, some of it is rumors and, and hearsay, but a lot of it has not been from the trustees, it's been a little bit, it
There are some rumors, yeah.
what has come across a little bit more arbitrary, um, and again, who, how is that process done and who, for every building, if we wanted to, if we select board needed to meet in the annex, who, who manages the annex, who manages the wood studio, who manages town hall, um, and if we go forward with the municipal facilities, you study, um, process and everything, how does that, how does that management piece continue? It's only going to get, um, more cumbersome as we have more space and the opportunity for, for more meetings or different meetings or whatever, so.
Yeah, we definitely, if I may, we definitely need to come up with a more centralized system of, um, using the spaces, e, even just on the town level, before you can get out to the community level, um, because oftentimes we don't know if a room is available for a meeting, we have to email first, wait to hear back, send a reservation form. Um, I, for example, manage the wood studio, but, you know, cable manages this room, library manages those rooms, um, so it gets very confusing and sometimes it's just on like a, a calendar in somebody's office and it's just not effective.
Didn't we talk about computerizing this process?
I think, I think Austin, I'm probably gonna ask to hold on this just because I think Austin has a draft plan for things, but I think also
Okay.
we as a board need to figure out if it's going to be, everything is kind of through, whether it's through the select board administrator's office or whether it's through DPW, um, and not the building owners, just in the sense of then if there's repairs or supplies, like at the communities, at the building on Glenwood, who, who ultimately is responsible for toilet paper and paper towels and soap. There's different soaps, same with here, you, you know, there's different setups, so just to make sure that all of that is, is covered and what that process is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Michelle, did you have a, a question or a comment? I saw your hand up. Name and address, please.
Oh, sure.
Michelle Van Reit, two thirty Ternock Hill Road. So, I served on, um, the COA for quite a while, twenty-five years ago, on the COA board and uh, this has been an ongoing issue for, for many years, even prior to my serving on that board. And I think there's uh, uh, layers of problems here in terms of sharing space. One of them is, um, when the lack of organization, I think, um, Tamika said it, uh, who do you go to? And then, and it kind of depends which group, you know, if, if you get along with that person or not, it seems to be a little bit of that and a little bit of how the groups, uh, leave the space the way they found it. Um, but then again, a lot of the spaces, I can only speak to the community center from twenty-five years ago, um, so if, if a group came in and they made a mess, there's, there's not really much, there was no system set up for, okay, well, where do you find supplies? Because then the kitchen was locked and you couldn't find cleaning supplies if they wanted to wipe off the tables, you know what I mean? Um, in terms of like, so I think there has to be supplies, some supplies available, maybe provided by the town, so that people could clean up after themselves, 'cause you, some groups might if they know they're gonna be making a big mess, but if, if some incidental spill happens and you've got no supplies other than maybe some paper towels in the bathroom that may or may not be there. So I think that you need supplies. I think you definitely need a, a system where anybody can go on and figure out what's available. I agree, having, having to chase around twenty-five different people for this space or that space is kind of not fair to people who are donating their time to the town, if, if it's for a town board or even for citizens to try to access public space. So I think you're hitting on a multitude of issues that all need to kind of get, get rooted out to figure out how you can make it so that everyone plays well together. And then the other piece of that is, wh- what is, what is a system in place that if something incidental does happen, how does it get fixed and, and what happens? So, for example, um, holes were made in the walls, um, in, in the community center. Uh, the people that were using it said that they would fix them, they never did, and then the COA ended up using their funds to fix the holes in the walls. So is there a way for the town to have some system set up, so you charge back, like there's maybe on the forms, that if you break something or you destroy something that needs that costs money to fix, that there's some way to charge it back to the organization or the group that rented the room? Or not even rented, but you know, set, set aside the room. I don't think people should have to pay to use them, but at the same time, there does need to be a system in place to keep track of all of that stuff. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And I think that kind of goes with an inventory of what the condition of the buildings, um, are before they're being used, um, and also I think some of the work that's, happens within the buildings, um, existing buildings aren't isn't always communicated or necessarily approved appropriately, um, or hasn't been, and so ensuring that any work is done, um, through the appropriate channels, we hold our, we, we're, we're holding our citizens to these standards, we should be holding ourselves to these same standards, um, and everything.
Okay, I just, I can't imagine we're the only town that has public spaces that they want citizens to be able to use, so if we can reach out to other locals to see, what are you doing? Are you collecting a credit card as it, for incidentals, if you need to use it for whatever reason, like, there's gotta be some mechanism
There is.
to do that.
So I am part of, um, like a huge email distribution group of executive assistants in, I think it's almost all three hundred and fifty-one communities. They ask questions all the time. I can just ask them, what do you guys do in your community? And just kind of collect that data and then bring it back to the board and you guys can suss through
Yeah.
what you like and what you don't like, is that fair?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I think.
That's good.
And I think, I mean, it sounds like the kind of consensus is a more centralized process for kind of all the buildings, um, and, and.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, if it's available and somebody puts in for it, if, if, if they're checking all the boxes and it, why can't they use the space, bottom line, you know?
Right. Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
There is a fair amount of confusion that happens from time to time about who's using what's.
There is a fair amount of confusion that happens from time to time about who's using what space and so on and so forth, so you know.
Sure.
Yeah.
Like even ours.
As much as Tamika's tried to handle, handle it, you know, there are still times when all of a sudden you'll be sitting here having a meeting and somebody walks in and says, oh, what are you doing here?
And I think also just as we get more and more Zoom capabilities and online capabilities and everything, who needs what access, right? That's, and what rooms or what buildings have
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
access for whatever it may be, whether it's full cable or whether it's Zoom access or
Yeah.
or a phone or TV or whatever. Thank you.
I think one thing to consider, we might be making a bigger deal out of this than we need to. Look at the Rutland Sports Club, not much different than the community center as a whole. You call up, you gotta know a member to get in there and there's, there's what, there's other mechanisms to consider to physically do that, right? So, I would say you can look at your other towns, but go to Holden, there isn't a lot of
Right.
building space that has a separate building, light department, libraries, fire station, but yet you can't use those, but but everybody's got a sports club or a child brook or things like that that you may wanna look at that you can compare the two to.
So, we'll continue this, but it sounds like we have some directive and kind of consensus among the board that we're hoping for more ease of access, streamlined process. Um, and accountability, not, you know, not a no, more we wanna say yes and have a level of accountability.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, the other one that we had looked at was, uh, on our agenda was the board and committee appointments. Um, this one has, um, been pain in my side, thorn in my side, since I've been on the board. Um, and I think that the it's been used recently almost as a hindrance, um, to to appointments. Um, and I would just want to make it so that the board is able to make thoughtful and well-informed decisions, but not prolong appointments or, um, use it as a, as a tool. Um, so I think the current policy, um, has been a written recommendation from the relevant, that the, that the policy, the select board, um, shall take into consideration any or all of the following criteria prior to new, appointing new members, filling vacancies and reappointing existing members. Um, and that some of what needs to be taken into consideration is written recommendation from the relevant board or committee. Um, the municipal and individual risk exposure, um, under MGL, um, which I believe is conflict of interest. Um, any professional qualifications, personal expe- or experience and availability of member as described in the member's letter of interest, so, um, kind of that, this is, uh, things that need to be taken into consideration. It does not mean that that's an automatic in versus an automatic out. Um, we, the board, I think per the new bylaws that passed, um, any position that's not filled by July first, um, is considered empty, uh, until it's appointed, um, and that, um, the um, I think keeping everything up to date on the website. Um, we've been trying to do a a stronger push as far as when reappointment times come, that we put a blast out to not just the, the existing members, but also to the community that it's reappointment time. Um, if vacancies are filled as such, um, I think some of the other conversation has been a little bit of a a challenges to when we do the appointment, who needs to be in attendance at every meeting, um, uh, when we do the appointment. And I think in the past, the kind of hope and intent was that i- if a that the member, that a, a candidate would be in attendance at one meeting for questions, almost to, as a as an interview, I've ideally in that time when everyone is there, um, that the board, if there's multiple mem- multiple candidates for a position, the board can kind of almost interview the members. Um, but then, um, I don't believe it states that the chair, um, of the, of the committee must, it says, uh, representative from the board or committee and it's recommended new member must attend. I think if we have the recommendation of the, of the board or committee, um, I'm not sure that it's mandatory that the, the chair or representative from the existing board or committee attend. Um, so, and I think having members attend is, would be ideal for all of the interviews to kind of happen, you know, and I say interviews to kind of happen at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but if for some reason something was held and a member was there and the board was able to ask questions and everything, but not able to attend a subsequent meeting, I don't necessarily think that that should be held against that member or that, that candidate, I guess. Um, so again, trying to streamline, provide the board, select board the opportunity to make the best informed decisions, but also not have it as a hindrance to, um, the work of the boards and committees as well as the, the candidates themselves, so.
If I may.
Yeah, um, I, I agree. I don't, if we have, uh, if we have multiple interested parties and we have all of their letters of interest plus a letter of recommendation from the board that they want to serve on, who they feel is the best fit, I don't see the need to have a representative of that board. I would like to see the person or applicants that would like to be on the board, to be here. I think my biggest complaint that I've, feel like I've seen with a lot of the applications for interest is all we get is, I'm interested in serving on this board. They don't actually provide any of their, why are you interested? What qualifications or background do you have that you feel would make you a good fit for this? Um, so I would be more interested to see if there's a way that we can change the application to be a little bit more specific as to what we're asking for.
So believe it or not, it does say that on the application, when you go through the website and it does ask you to provide that information
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
and sometimes we get it and sometimes we don't. So I think that'll have to be more the responsibility of our office to push back and say,
Okay.
unfortunately, this letter of interest is not sufficient. Can you please give us some more information? Um, but it does, it does currently say that.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And I.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It, it just helps to formulate questions as you're talking about who is the best fit for you know, the different boards that we're talking about, because except, you don't, you don't have questions for the chair or representative of the board. I mean, ideally, we all know what those charges are, have an idea of what those boards or committees are doing. You wanna find the right people to sit on those boards, so that's the more important person in my opinion.
And, and I, I think that that's accurate, like, and for me, I think it's professional as well as personal, just because what I do professionally might not be what I wanna do in my
Right.
in my volunteer time, um, but I might have a very strong personal connection or something also.
Absolutely.
Um, that I can do that. So I don't want it to feel like people have to have a professional level, um,
Oh, no.
experience to to do it. I also think while I value very much the recommendation of the board and committee, board or committee, I think that it's also perfectly okay, um, to not appoint based on that recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there were a few ins- uh, uh, one instance in particular that caused some drama, um, that the board had gone against the appointment of the recommended, recommended member, um, and it sometimes that's what needs to happen, especially if a board or committee isn't going, isn't doing the work that, that the board, the select board feels is, is what they would like to see. Um.
And if I may, just coming from being in a part of many of those meetings with boards and committees, sometimes it's hard for that board or committee while that person is serving and sitting next to them to say that they're not going to recommend that person for reappointment, even if maybe they're not the best fit for that. Um, so I think sometimes maybe it is best when the select board makes that final decision.
And I think also it's not always clear to new member, n- new new people that are new to trying to get involved, to understand what that process looks like, that, you know, if, I know if I talk to anybody, I suggest that they at minimum watch the videos, watch the meetings, if 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 they can attend in person, even better. Um, and I always, again, I think we need to explicitly spell out maybe that everything goes through, they can talk to any, any board member, sitting committee member or whatever,
Yeah.
but the process still needs to go through the, the office.
Yeah.
And it's not for any individual person to say, you're not a good fit, it's ultimately for the select board to, to do that.
To see all of them.
So, um, to have, the select board to have an entire pool, um, of all interested candidates. Um, and, and make that decision. Obviously, the, the committee would make a recommenda- would potentially make a recommendation on either all of those or, or not. Um, but maybe also, I don't know if there's value to sending, you know, if we get five interested candidates for a position, is there value to sending those five to the, to the seat, currently seated board or committee? As like, hey, these people are interested, this is when their next meeting is, almost as a C scene to, to them or whatever. Um.
I was gonna ask that if, if there is a value to having it be part of the policy, that an interested member that's not currently serving needs to attend at least one of that particular board or commission's meetings. Um, cause I have seen some folks that have come forward that are interested, but they've never attended a meeting before.
Yeah.
Um, and, and if you're brand new, you wouldn't know that, you know, or so maybe, so I usually encourage that, anytime I get a letter of interest, say, hey, go to a meeting first,
Yeah.
meet the board, see what they do, but maybe if we include that in the policy, I can just make that a habit of anytime I get a letter of interest, I send them the policy and just say, hey, let's review, you know, this is what you can expect.
And maybe what that board's schedule of meetings is, so that they can, can plug it in.
Yes. Yep.
Um, because I do think it is important that they, and, and I, I guess I struggle a little bit with whether they although they would need to be, whether they go in person or on Zoom or something, because that's when their regular scheduled meeting would be, so if they're going to that meeting, then they would be um, have to fit it onto a calendar within a time frame anyway.
Yeah.
I, I would say there is value to the committee for the person to show up for which the committee is gonna be considering them for the committee.
Mm-hmm.
Face to face, their emotions, how they react.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Cause, you know, this, the document doesn't say that the chairman, it doesn't say who signs the letter, but it should say that if the committee is going to nominate somebody, all the committee members should sign. Everybody's name should be on there.
Hmm.
Well, it says written recommendation from the relevant board or committee, so that's generally a, a majority.
Right. But it doesn't, but it, right, but it doesn't say it should be signed. It just says a letter and then nothing else, so normally a chairman signs it. But I think every member should sign it.
I think that's. I don't necessarily care if every mem- cause it should be documented in the meeting minutes that, that a vote was, that a discussion was had and a vote was taken to authorize whomever to write a letter or to email, um, a letter of support or something. Um.
Yeah, I, I would, I would even go so far as to update what we have here and just state that the committee has, if they're going to, if, if we, um, I don't know if we're gonna make it optional, like to your point, to begin, maybe somebody, a board's not comfortable saying, we wanna appoint some, this person who's, we're not gonna reappoint you sitting on the board, we don't wanna recommend you, if they're not comfortable with that. Um, I, I still think I would like to see it in here that, that discussion as a committee happen, if they do have a recommendation and that they do vote on who they feel would be the best fit based on that to to send to, as part of the application for the board.
That voting should be mandatory.
Yeah.
In the committee, absolutely.
But to, to Leah's point, I don't, I don't know if it matters that everybody on the committee signs it, or if, as long as you voted, if the letter can come from the chair, whomever is designated to send that letter, I think that's fine, as long as.
Or the secretary, if there's a secretary, secretary, clerk, yeah.
If there's a clerk, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, somebody to say.
So I know usually for myself, for the boards and committees that I work for, um, when I assist them with writing a letter, I always put in, um, the, the motion and the vote that was taken, but I always, um, note who the voting members were, so that if we ever had to look back at this in ten years, we would know who was serving at the time.
Sure.
And then usually the chair will authorize me to do an electronic signature, just so that we're not chasing people down for their signatures, that would be my only hesitation.
Mm-hmm.
It's just the challenge of, if you're, if you're on a time constraint, like around reappointment season, like if it's an off-season appointment, it's probably okay to wait till the next meeting to get all the signatures, but during appointment season, it just helps to expedite the process.
And I think that's fine, because for me, the most important piece is the committee discusses it as a whole and that they vote on it.
Yeah.
And, and I do agree, I, I think it's redundant if the chair or if the committee's giving this letter to make somebody from that committee show up here.
Yeah.
When they've already done, that's kinda redundant.
Yeah.
But the individual should be here, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. And I, I do like Tamika's suggestion of asking that they attend, I mean, I, I, I find that kind of strange that you would be putting your name in a hat for a committee and you haven't attended, uh, so.
Right.
Happens a lot.
But if that's something.
You see that?
Yeah.
But look at even the elections, right? Like elected members, right? So, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
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 But yeah, just having, having that as part of it, that, you know, at least via Zoom, like they, I, I, I don't disagree with you, Harry, I mean, just even wanting to meet those other members in person, you know, it, it does feel a little different than, than being on Zoom, but if but also even acknowledging the meeting schedule, because we wanna make sure that people understand the commitment and what you know, everybody, you know, you know, there might be meetings here and there that you're not able to attend for whatever reasons, but you need to be able to consistently attend to do the business that.
Yeah.
I think Mike had his hand up.
Yeah, in a minute, Mike, hold on. I think the other consideration also is just that the boards and committees need to, and maybe this goes out as an email blast during appointment season, especially, there might be people sitting in your meetings, and that's okay, you don't need to, why are you here?
Yeah.
Do, do you need something? You know, cause I've, I've been watching, you know, I've watched meetings or attended meetings, especially when I first started attending a lot more of the meetings than I, um, was, well, what do you need? Like, I just wanna learn what you're doing, like, I'm not, you know, but it's a public meeting, I'm just here to serve.
Just.
Oh. Oh, yeah, there's, there's a few meetings in town that still do that.
Yeah.
And, and.
Can we help you?
Right.
No, just, just watching.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Mike, name and address, please.
Yeah, Mike Dvarik is five Stevens Way. This, uh, to what you're saying to the chair, uh, as, as you know, I'm on a couple of committees. And there was one committee that I was not chosen. I think it's imperative that you attend a meeting at least once, preferably in person. Uh, it does give you a lot of knowledge, whether or not you're chosen doesn't matter. I learned a lot from that one meeting that I went to that I didn't get chosen for, and in the future, I'm still interested. And it also gives the other members of that committee a chance to get to know you and see you and listen to you, so that when you put the application in, you do get the support of the board. So I think it's imperative, uh, in my opinion anyway, to attend at least one meeting, uh, for that committee that you wanna chose for. You learn a lot, trust me, you do. Thank you.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Nice one.
Can that be added to their application submission? Their letter, their interest?
What are you looking for, to add on the application?
Have you attended any meetings for this, Kelly?
Oh, I think that's great.
And again, I think if, and I don't know how to do it to make it, whether it's through the website or something that people can click on whatever board and commission they're looking for to see when their
Yeah.
like regular meetings slash.
Yeah, so on the board and committee vacancy page, it lists the positions and their openings, and then underneath each one, you can click and it'll take you directly to that boards page, and it has the meeting schedule, their meeting minutes, their charge, any other information that you need. It's all right on that page.
And I don't know if, I don't know how cumbersome it is on your end when applications come in, just to send, like, in a notice of receiving their kind of application.
Yep.
That, okay, it looks good, but he, and, and here is the, the next scheduled meetings, or this is your meeting schedule or whatever, for whatever board or committee they're in, or if they
I do that. Mm-hmm.
you know, if it's not, if it's just, I'm interested in this board and you're asking for more information.
Mm-hmm.
And also, this is the meeting schedule, you know what I mean? Just kind of in that follow-up email include
Absolutely.
to, cause I, there's been a number of people that have asked me recently, are your meetings open? Can I come? Can I, and I said, yes, please do, you know, and, um.
Mm-hmm. Sure, absolutely. And then once the board adopts any of the changes to the policy, I'll just automatically start attaching the policy when I do that follow-up email. Um, and then I can also link right in that email to the page of the board or committee that they're interested in, and just say, here's where you can get some more, you know, information, cause a lot of them have like helpful links as well, like the conservation commission, we have links to, you know, Mast EP and different state websites and the GIS, and so it just depends on the board or committee that you're working, working with.
Yeah, thank you. And I know different boards and committees have more, um, of a requirement, uh, time-wise, like, that, um, I know the, uh, the, um, Kong Kong tends to have a lot of training and everything, um, where some of the other ones. um where some of the other ones don't have, you know, kind of formal training, so.
Mm.
Right.
For years, I ran a four-person committee with a fifth with a fifth open seat, okay?
Me neither.
And one of the things that we did was to record the concerts at the schools in the spring and again at Christmas time, alright? Now, the number of people who came up to talk to us about, ooh, you know, this looks fairly interesting, so on and so forth. And, you know, would you be interested in in serving on the committee or coming to work with the cable T V system? And, you know, well, yes, on that particular moment, the answer was yes. And so, okay, so, you know, a little while later, well, um the kids are uh active in sports and um, you know, they have church activities and this sort of thing and so you know, that was that was the end of it. And so, you know, I've had an open spot on the committee for a number of years.
So I'm just so you know, I have a another uh social media post scheduled for next week. Um I've gone through and updated the board and committee vacancy page again, um and we have another blast that's going out to just let folks know. Um you know, we have these openings available if anybody's interested. So we're trying to keep it in people's forefront. Of course, it's a hard time of year with the holidays, so we'll we'll reboot it again in the new year too.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you. So I think that that's some good feedback initially to kind of start to rework it and um
Sure. Mm-hmm.
we can obviously come back and revisit it after we see kind of the the reworking and everything. I do like um in the policy kind of that the vacancies shall be posted for at least fourteen days, at least fourteen days prior to um being filled. Um so I think that that's important, that we're trying to give adequate um opportunity and not just kind of first in. And I know kind of we had the conversation for the charter
Mm-hmm.
committee that we were gonna keep it open longer than fourteen days 'cause we didn't want it to just be that first
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
in and first out. And so really trying to cre- create a poll. A lot of communities, I'm always surprised whenever I go to meetings, a lot of communities have a pool of residents who are looking to serve.
Mm-hmm.
Um and for either a specific board or committee, but also just saying this is a little bit of my background and kind of I'm interested. And if there's an opening that, you know, you think is I might fit in, like, you know, let me know and I'll I'll make an effort to see if it's something I I'm interested in or whatever also, so.
I would be so excited if we could get to that point. That would be awesome.
Right.
Yeah, right.
If we can get to that point, right, so.
Mm. Is the board amenable to our office making the changes that we discussed tonight?
I do.
Gathering some more data from the other communities and then bringing it back to you to continue? Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay.
I do have one question. Is if you look at number three, vacancies shall be posted, the board will not make any board and committee appointments unless all posting requirements are met. Are there only two posting re- posting requirements, fourteen days prior and vacancies shall be posted? Is that the only thing in posting requirements?
So there it there's nothing in M G L that speaks to posting requirements as far as board and committee vacancies?
Okay.
Um and usually the only place that we post them is on the town website. Um we could add that they have to be posted, um you know, in an alternate location like at town hall or at the library. But um
Well, I'm curious 'cause I'm I'm trying to figure out what makes posting requirements that we've met, you know?
Yeah, there's nothing specific to that language. Yeah, in that case, there isn't anything specific.
So I think if you look under the first bullet under that, um boards and committees with vacancies and membership shall prepare their next scheduled meeting after receiving a letter of resignation and notice of all such vacancies and shall notify the board of selectmen and the town clerk in writing of said vacancies for posting on the town's website, the community hall bulletin board, and on local access cable T V within thirty days from the date of said meeting. So it sounds like some of the onus is on the board
Okay.
Yeah.
or committee that has the resignation to provide um information to for posting also.
Okay. So maybe once the board adopts the revised one, we send it out as a friendly reminder? 'Cause I bet a lot of boards and committees just don't realize that.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Um do we wanna keep the cable T V portion in there? Do you feel that th- that there's value to that? Is that something Paul that that's feasible for cable or do we wanna just stick to the website and the town hall? What do you think?
Hmm.
What do you think, Paul?
I don't know that there's a simple solution to it. In other words, I haven't found it and I've been, like I say, working on filling a position for a number of years and now looking at filling uh some open spots on the cable system itself. Um you know, i- it's hard to say. I, you know, my own opinion of the whole thing is, you know, there's there's no real simple solution. In other words, yes, the town is always looking for help to do these things and it's volunteer help basically. And so, you know, if they're going to volunteer, then they're going to volunteer, but you know, I I I don't wanna make it sound that bad, but I've heard excuses of all sorts, alright? So I mean, you know, okay, so you want somebody who's gonna be interested in doing something. Well, at that very moment, they are. Ten minutes later, not so much maybe, but you know, it is what it is.
I mean, I think if, sorry, sorry, Harry.
Okay.
I I think for posting, you know, kind of notification of vacancies and everything, I think one of the things we hear about is we need to figure out beyond just kind of internet and social media ways to reach people. And so I think as long as we still have local access cable, there's value to having even if it's saying stop in town hall or go to the website or something for the list of vacancies
Mm-hmm.
that is a little bit more form form um set um rather than having to change every time there's a vacancy. I'm not one hundred percent sure how that would look. Um but I do think as long as we have it as an as an option, even if it's tagged at like the end of the select board meeting, you know, at the end of all the boards and committee meetings that are televised or something
Mm.
um that there that there's a vacancy, you know, there's a vacancy on this board, it's, you know.
Sure. And I don't, I I try to always get it up on the electronic sign.
Yeah.
Um and we've also been trying to include it in our newsletter, so I just wrote a note to myself 'cause we haven't included it, I think, since September.
Okay.
Um so maybe in the December or January newsletter, we can put another one in there. Um
Mm-hmm.
you know, and I can also um ask Nancy Nichols if she could include it in the C O A newsletter too.
Yeah.
Um because not only do the seniors read it, but I know a lot of like their families and their children read it. Um so maybe we could get some more of the folks who may not have access to the internet through that means as well.
And I also don't know if there's a way to keep kind of a a section on the bulletin board in town hall in the annex as far as not necessarily that it's a single page for each vacancy, but something listing the boards and committees and how many vacancies there are or something. So
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
and then even if it's like a tear page or something that people can take if they're interested or some. I'm not sure again how to to work it in my head, but something to try to just doesn't require constant updating, but is additional opportunities to get
Mm-hmm. Mm.
to get the information out. You know, and I think I still go back to thinking about uh during sports seasons and everything, having Q R codes posted at um marsh or the soccer fields, memorial and every and Central Train stuff that people, parents can Q R code, scan a Q R code that takes them either to the newsletter or to the website or something that that shows that they can do it from their phone.
Mm-hmm.
Harry, did you have something? Sorry.
Yeah, I just had a question for Tamika. On the website, when you list the vacancies,
Mm-hmm.
it says here that shall include preferred experience and qualifications of its members. Do most of them have that on it? What the preferred, what they're looking for in terms of qualifications?
No.
You know, in the experience.
So the particular conditions don't. Um so on the application itself, it asks you to provide that information, but we don't have like a specific almost like job description, if you will, for each of the boards and committees. Um we kind of, I guess, leave it to the resident to read the charge or or the mission statement of that board and committee and decide if that kind of falls within their wheelhouse or not. So no, we don't specifically have that.
No, not, but I've forwarded job descriptions um any odd number of times to somebody who wanted to pass it on to another person from the town, okay? And so, you know, yeah, it has a it's a job description for a camera operator and this sort of thing is fairly to the point type of job description, alright? And so, alright, so, you know, you're gonna have to be able to carry around twenty-five pounds. You're gonna have to work some evenings and this sort of thing. And I mean, you know, besides being glorious, it also has its moments when um it's not so glorious. So, okay, so I mean, you know, people just kind of have to think, well, you know, okay, is this really what I wanna do? Do I wanna get my hands dirty or whatever? So I mean, you know, it's it's something that there's a particular type of person that's going to come in and look at this thing and say, yes, I wanna do this. Okay, so, okay, it is what it is, but making a simple point of something like that is not really a very easy thing to do.
I hear you. So I think, do you feel like that you have good kind of feedback currently and then um if
I do.
you can work on kind of amending, updating, and then we'll look at it again and see if there's any other tweaks or if there if as we're sitting here and you kind of continue to digest and think of anything, by all means, send Tamika um an email and, you know, just note that it's a an additional comment or whatever for consideration, but.
Yes, please. Mm-hmm.
So those were the two policies that we had. Um we are working our way through. Unfortunately, we don't haven't hit any that we're like good to just move, you know,
Mm-hmm.
accept and move on, but I think we
Yeah.
we're having the discussion as far as some of the the challenges with the existing policies.
Mm-hmm.
Um so thank you, Tamika, for, I know it's a lot of work for you to.
No, I feel really good about that one. I feel like that one was the most that the most feedback that I think we've had on a particular policy to to kind of give us something to work with and maybe come up with something better.
Yeah.
Mm.
Yeah, I think a lot of them are tough just because they're in the in a little bit of a a weird spot with what's happening, you know, transition here and there with um.
It's kind of like wheels in motion already a little bit behind the scenes and you don't wanna put something in place just to change it again. Yeah, I get that.
Right. Um so thank you all. Um if the board is amenable to holding the continued discussion of the special act, um just because it's already
Hmm.
almost eight thirty. Um and knowing that this the earliest that we would bring this forward would be this the annual town meeting in May, um I don't wanna hold it forever, but just kind of being mindful of the time.
Yeah.
Um if the board is.
That sounds good.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Um and so for our upcoming meetings, I just lost my paper there. Um our upcoming meetings are we maybe based on our um meeting tonight, we have the special town meeting, which is November twenty-first, that's Thursday. Um six P M at Glenwood, at the Glenwood Elementary School. Um we will co-post for or we will post for five-thirty. Um I believe planning board tonight had their public hearings for the remaining two zoning. Um bylaw changes um that we were considering, would consider to make a recommendation
Mm-hmm.
um on or not um at that kind of five-thirty meeting. Um and then we canceled our November twenty-fifth meeting. Um and we will have meetings in December for December second and December sixteenth. And that will finish us out for the for the calendar year pending any emergencies. Hopefully there are none. Um.
Second, sixteenth, okay.
Is there any other future agenda request items? Um I will look at the, I'll I'll look at how the agenda's looking for the for um the December second meeting. I fear just with the tax classification um hearing that we might, it might be a little bit of a longer meeting, so we may not get to policy. I would almost rather hold off on policy and if we have a little bit of time to discuss 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 special act, but we can see how the agenda works out. If anybody has a a strong want or need or desire for the next set of policies though, by all means, let me know tonight or let Tamika and I and Austin know. Um then we'll prioritize those either at December second or um in our upcoming meetings.
I don't know if it's like an immediate need, but um knowing that we're probably gonna have some street acceptance requests at the upcoming town meeting,
Mm-hmm.
that one should probably be reviewed and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is currently with town council.
Okay.
Um it's done being drafted and so we're waiting to get it back from town council. And then um our town planner, John Charbonneau, and our uh third-party engineer, Kevin Quinn, planning to come to a select board meeting to discuss that policy with you guys.
Yep. Thank you. Um and I think the other thing that came on our radar the past couple weeks is the board of registrar um information. And so there's a lot of um M G L and Secretary of State uh guidance on that, so that will probably be at one of our December meetings as well. Um just as a as a heads up. Um and I don't know if um if that we should try to coordinate with Anita also. Um I need to read how the M G L is and everything also, but I'm not opposed to it, so we can can work on on all of that as well. Um does anybody else have any other um any other?
Um I think we had also talked about doing uh no, never mind. Was that a policy? The the meeting minutes with the opening? No, that was that wasn't a policy, right?
Oh, it's not a policy, but I do have it noted to do in our set, one of our December meetings.
Just a discussion topic.
A discussion and then decide if you're gonna put out a statement.
Okay, yes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And I give. Yeah, and I think Austin also had
I didn't say anything, no.
um suggested a training with um like K P.
No, just uh.
Just for Leah.
Yeah, that was it.
Yeah.
Maybe not until the new year just because of the time between special town meeting and holidays and everything.
Yeah.
But open to all boards and committees, you know, mandatory.
Leah? Do you need to, this year, I think you need to.
I believe the I M A is just Leah's signature.
Sorry, what?
I was just gonna say, I think the I M A is just Leah's signature.
Yeah, yeah, but I didn't put the date on it.
Oh.
So um but yeah, thank you. Is there anything else to come before the board tonight? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Second. Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in, I.
What'd you write?
Yeah, Matt.
White man eye, eight twenty-six.